Special meeting of the Emory Unified School District Board of Trustees. Following that, I will go through the special meeting. There's a special meeting agenda for this evening and then move into our regular board meeting. Okay? So now, can I have roll call, please?
President Dice.
President.
Member Mueller-Williams. Williams-Mueller. Member Dwin.
Present.
Member Felt.
Here.
Could you all please pull your mics closer?
Mics closer? Did that work?
Members Simon and Kent Ash will be a bit late.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right. Now, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You should have the irregulars.
Got the special meeting but not the regular.
Member Viscount, could you bring what printed up to Ms. Williams-Mueller?
All right. We'll now move on to Item C, approval of the agenda. Any changes? I think we're good.
We're talking about the special meeting.
Special meeting.
Yes.
Okay. And at this time, we'll have public comment on this particular agenda. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board on this particular agenda? All right. Thank you. So we'll now move on to Item E, which is a discussion and hopefully approval of the request for proposal. The board did meet on last Friday evening and worked through quite a bit of the RFP that would be used in terms for soliciting search firm services. And so this evening, we were able to bring it forward from that special meeting last Friday evening. And what board members have in front is the current language. And I wanted to ask any board members if there's any comments. And I just wanted to raise that on page two. Under Preparation of Proposal. But you know what? That "I" looks good to me now. I can't tell. Remember, Felt, do you see a different "I"? For the second sentence under that first paragraph or under Preparation of Proposal.
It is.
It does, right? Maybe that looks good. It looks good, man.
It looks bolded. It's bolded.
And you know what? Same thing in that second line under that Preparation of Proposal is must be in is the same thing. And then, under, on page four, nondiscrimination, Item Two in that section. And actually, sorry, for font, from a font perspective, the number one is Roman numeral one, looks like, or "I" there. That needs to be fixed. And then to strike two, because there's no section, there's, or, excuse me, move three to Item Two.
Yep.
Okay. And I think page five was good. We have conflict of interest. That was fine. Page six, under Proposal Retirements, it's just the font change, I believe, there too for Item One, or "I" is there. So I think it'll be the number one in Times, in Roman or whatever.
Maybe a space between contract term, too.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, too. There's a space between contract term on that same page six.
Yep.
And I think that was it that I saw. The dates were fine. I didn't see any problems there. Those were just my comments. And just to note, we did have legal counsels involved in a review in language regarding this, as well as as requested by the board, John and myself.
So the request that I had asked the legal to come up with regarding giving us the past clients that they've served and any individuals, okay.
It's under five on page seven.
Thank you.
Number five. Procedure consultant will use to disclose, will use to disclose to the district prior recruiting searches involving any candidate that is screened.
Thank you.
What are you trying to get at again?
Just trying to see or have the consultant firm disclose any of past candidates that they have presented to clients and any candidates that they may have in their pool of a search. So it's just to kind of disclose that information. Okay?
Yep.
Much better. So I did have a few further edits. So on page six, under, did we get the one?
Yeah.
The font on the one there on page six. In 3C, the word national seems very cramped. I don't know if there's a spacing issue or something there. The number four that we added on Friday, management of a community interview panel process, et cetera, seems like that is one of the services that we want. We had proposed that to be a new H, as opposed to a separate number four. Is that, I would suggest that's where we put it. So it's not a number four. That whole thing becomes H.
Or "I." Are we replacing "H"?
I think "H" doesn't belong as a service. I think that's another edit. "H" is an experience reference. It goes under seven. All right. Because number three there is about services, experiencing conducting nationwide searches. That is not a service. That is part of their experience references. So that should be like an E, seven E. You're looking confused, Ms. Tameri.
I got it. We got it.
Ask now, Ms. Tameri, since you're making the edits, if you're not.
It moves on to the following page.
Yep.
Page seven, Item Seven, it would go as E.
So the current 3H becomes 7E. And the current number four becomes 3H.
Right.
And seven becomes six. Correct?
Right. The numbers moved up.
Oh, yes. Correct. Right. The word decision-making, which is in the current number four, but is going to be in the new 3H, it should be dash, connecting decision and making.
Can I suggest that these sort of formatting and typographical issues, maybe the committee could go over those with Ms.
We can't. This is it. That's why we're doing it now. The committee has gone over and that's.
That's the danger of my, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And that, I believe, is my last one. Otherwise, I think it's good to go.
For the purpose of the public, I just wanted to point out, since our last meeting was not, it was a special meeting, and special meetings, we don't have a way to arrange for the televising. I think it's important, is this on?
Yep.
It's important to note that what we did based on the community input at the last meeting was to add the community process so that we'll be going, one, we'll be going out, two, the meetings where people are already meeting, such as the teacher meetings, the PTO meetings, city council, and we've left it open for others if we're missing other gatherings. But we've left it that we're asking for them to budget six to eight meetings for getting input as to what the job profile is. And then on the other side, that we do a panel at the end where, and we'll work with it, we've asked the consultants to advise us on how the panel needs to be shaped, that we have a community panel that interviews the top one or two consultants, the two or three consultants when we narrow it down, the two or three.
I don't know if you put a number to it, but we did say there would be a committee to.
We put it as management of a community interview panel process so the consultants can give us what the state of the art in doing those processes. And we've left it to the consultants to advise us, and we'll see what proposals we get back. So I just wanted to point that out, since that was a question at the last meeting and since I've gotten a lot of community questions over the last week about it.
Okay.
So on 3A, I think there should be a period after profile because the other, I think G covers the creation of that solicit community input to inform the hiring profile.
What page?
On page six.
3A.
Are you, you want to, you want to strike the clause after that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine. We actually had that clause in there before, we added that clause on Friday, before we added G, is it?
Mm-hmm.
The community meeting thing. And so adding G obviated the need for that clause in A. So that's why we're.
Okay.
Perfection. Any other changes, amendments to this document? I know Member Brea wasn't here on Friday, so you're good. You're here now, so we'll catch you on the next set of documents for sure. But at this point, are there any public comment on this particular document or this item? All right. So at this point, you have all the amendments to it. And so as we hope tonight to actually bring this to the board, to have that document, would these amendments be honored with a motion and approval this evening to get this ball rolling? Anyone? Anyone?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Any objections to that? Seeing none. So we'll actually be able to get this issued this week, tomorrow. So we'll start that process. And it is definitely the board's goal to ensure that everyone has that information as soon as possible and get those special meetings that we have planned noticed well and often. That actually concludes our special meeting, which I will do now, and now open up the regular board meeting. Roll call, please, Ms. Tameri.
President Dice.
Present.
Member Mueller-Williams.
Present.
Williams-Mueller.
Present.
Williams-Mueller. Member Dwin.
Here.
Member Simon.
Here.
Member Felt.
Present.
All right. Seeing that, we've completed the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we could.
Stipulate completion.
Thank you. I love that word. Stipulate completion of that act this evening. So we'll move on to approval of the regular, approval of the agenda for this evening. Have any changes? I don't think so. Do we? Can I get a motion?
A move.
Second.
Great. Any objections to that? All right. We'll now move into Item D, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any topics that is not covered on this evening's agenda. It is the, it is true that the board will ask, continue to ask for, under discussion items specifically, I know consent calendar as well, if there's any questions from the community. But if there's any items that are not on the agenda this evening and wish to be brought to the board, this will be that opportunity. All right. And now, oh, yeah, yeah, I got you, huh? Come on up, if you would, to the podium and just.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Avila. I'm a parent.
Speaking to the mic.
Mark, it's not on.
Hit that mute.
Look, our tech person is coming.
He's outside.
Yeah, okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Avila. I'm a parent at Anna Yates School. And I just have a few questions about programs at the school right now. We used to have music and art as after-school program, and we no longer have it because of budget. So I was wondering if it's coming back soon or what is the plan on that? I think that's it.
Yeah, this is a time for public comment, so it's not a question and answer session. I think many of us share with you your concerns about music and art at Anna Yates, especially, I know I do, since I have a son there.
Okay.
And have that same concern. But just as a general matter, I think we hear you expressing your desire to see music and art at Anna Yates.
So then where should I, who should I talk to or?
So we have our.
So, yes. So just so you know, my Director of Ed Services and the Principal and I, we just had a conversation about that last week regarding our after-school program and our ACES grant. And so we are looking at the kinds of offerings and opportunities that we can have in that area, in the area of electives. So they haven't been fully fleshed out yet, but there is work in that arena, particularly in the area of art and music. So, yeah. You should be hearing, you should be hearing more about that shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Are there any other public comments at this time? All right. So we'll now move on to Item E, report out from closed session on October 23rd.
There were two items for closed session that evening on October 23rd. The first item was the board discussed significant exposure to litigation in two cases, and no actions were taken. And the second item was a discussion with legal counsel to give direction to the superintendent regarding negotiations with the California State Employees Association, and no actions were taken.
Thank you, Ms. Tameri. We'll now move into reports. Item F, are there any members of CSCA that wish to report out this evening?
Good evening.
I guess it's been a long time since y'all seen me.
Welcome back.
We miss you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gracie Smith. I'm the Vice President of our union. I'm here representing the sunshine, but everything's okay so far with our sunshine. And we are also in negotiation on November 21st. And that's all I had to say, besides, we have our regular meeting every month. Wish we missed one this month because our president was kind of sick. But second note, this is a different note coming from Gracie Smith for the food service. I am a food service worker at the high school. I've been there going on maybe nine years. I'm a little disappointed, not with the food service, because I think we are doing a great job at our food service, but I'm a little disappointed in my board members. Because we are at an old school that I have not seen hardly none of you. And none of you came over and asked us, you know, if things are going well. We have children, you know, that didn't eat before, they're eating. And you don't understand what we had to go through to get them to eat. We had a lot of training, which I commend my supervisor, Ms. Julie Dunn, commendously for doing what she done. We have a great sports program over there. The football program is excellent. The soccer program is excellent. And the children feel left out because when they went to Calistoga, they maybe met some of their board members. And here, we had a game at home, there's no board members. And you put us at a school there where we didn't have much, but you should go to that school now. And, Miss, Miguel can tell you, we are the school that is so clean. I commend our custodian for doing a well job, well done. But it doesn't hurt for the board member to come by to speak to our children. It doesn't hurt to come by in the kitchen and say, "Well done." It doesn't hurt to come to a game and say, "Hooray." I'm hurt because I was expected better out of my board. You know, I don't want to cry because I felt that I expect the president, which I see her every once in a while at the school, but never, I never saw her in the cafeteria and said, "Ms. Gracie or Ms. Brenda, things are working okay for you?" No, no, no. Thank you, Dr. Lindo, for taking the time out whenever you get a chance to come by and say hello. My young lady right here, she knows how hard we work. If you only know what we do in that kitchen to get our kids motivated to where they're at now, at the school, working in the job, going to school, they are the only one to come back and tell us, "Thank you." I have never got a card from the board for anything. Any questions?
I feel like I've been spanked, you know? And I don't feel like that too often, Ms. Gracie. But I do appreciate you coming up. I appreciate your words, and you're right. And I'm speaking for me as a board member. I should be up at the high school a little bit more.
Yes.
And I've been meaning to do it. I haven't, but I will. So I thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Sun, I would like to see y'all coming.
I was just going to throw in, because you said the president of the board who graduated from the high school. I'm like, oh, yes, ma'am. I will be there tomorrow, so.
I know. What I'm saying is that you, we are at a school that I have never, nine years I've been here, the floors look like this. And I commend my custodian people for doing what they're doing. We, we are at a school that we love to come to work. We're happy. But you also got a sports program that y'all should take a little time and do something for them. And let them feel that, you know, you appreciate them.
And can I say something on that note? You know, you're right, but I have not gotten any type of word of what the football team is doing or what the soccer team is doing. That doesn't mean I still shouldn't be out there. But if these teams are doing great, it would be nice for someone doing public comment to come up.
Well, I'm a type of public comment. I'm a supporter for the football team.
All right, and that's good.
And they are doing great. And we have got a game in Middletown on Friday night.
And not.
Playoff.
And it's not even coming up, but, you know, through some type of correspondence to let the board know.
Okay.
How good the team is doing.
I will, I will take that back.
Right.
And thank y'all for letting me stand here. But you know what? I will not miss another meeting.
Thank you.
So I'd like to put in a plug to have all the board members to sign up for the Principal Shaverin's Twitter account and follow him on Twitter.
I don't do Twitter.
Or the principal, or Ms. Lathan, or myself on Twitter. Because you would get instant updates around sports and things like that, particularly from Mr. Shaverin, Principal Shaverin, related to the sports program. Just a little plug.
Learn Twitter.
Yeah, I got an email address.
They went public. Got to help them. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gracie. Appreciate you.
Appreciate the challenge, definitely. Do we have a member from ETA this evening? A member from Anna Yates PTO, Emory Secondary School PTO?
John, do you want to report on the?
Oh.
John and I were at the PTO meeting last night.
Are you representing PTO, Anna Yates PTO?
I will if no one else will.
Make sure I'm covered here.
If we don't have a member here. We happy to report that Ms. Miles robo-called and arm-twisted and turned out parents last night at the first PTO convening of the year for Anna Yates. If you may recall, there were no parents that were able or willing to commit to be a PTO officer at the end of the year. So Ms. Miles called this meeting, and there was a turnout, and there were parents who stepped forward. And we now have a slate of PTO officers at Anna Yates that was elected last night. So Sonia Durrett is the president, and Michelle Jeter is the secretary, and Cecilia Brooks is the treasurer, and Rocio Singh is the vice president. So we got a slate, and things are going to be happening.
Fine. Good, Ms. Brea, you got a good recall.
So I guess the only question I have, was there any appeal to get any of those parents involved with the LCAP and school site council?
You'll hear about that.
There was indeed, as a matter of fact.
All right.
Yes. So the principal made a pitch to get people to join the school site council and announce that the meeting is scheduled next week. And yours truly made a pitch that parents get involved in the LCAP and gave them a little bit of history on, a little background on this new LCAP process that's coming our way.
Okay, great. Good job. Thank you.
Josh? And just on this point, I think to the point of the parent who spoke earlier, the point was made that parents are welcome to come to the school site council meetings, which are coming up. And that's really a great forum for talking about programmatic needs and for the council to inform the board as to what are the program, programmatic needs. And then it's up to us to work with you to find the money to be able to do it, because I think these are important programs.
And the second that, if you have the time to stay around for the LCAP item tonight on the board, there'll be an explanation of how the district has much more flexibility this year to decide what the priorities are going to be and how we're going to spend our money. And if we want to do art and music, then we have to figure out what to cut to do that or how to make it happen. And so there's a lot more opportunity for you, for all of us, to be involved in setting the priorities this year at Anna Yates and district-wide. In fact, we have to appoint a new district parent advisory panel to inform that process. So maybe you want to advance yourself as, to be part of that panel.
For what it's worth, LCAP stands for Local Control Action Plan.
Accountability.
Accountability Plan.
You're almost there.
You know, five, six more meetings. I'll get it. But I think it's important to decode our acronyms. Thank you.
So for Emory Secondary School PTO, student representative, have you reported statements?
Hello.
No. As long as your mic is on.
Tonight I will be reporting on both of the school sites. So first, Anna Yates. October 31st, Anna Yates held their annual harvest festival in the Anna Yates School Yard. The event was coordinated by the Anna Yates 7th and 8th grade ASB and with Emory Secondary School Associated Student Body joining in to help them set up and clean up. The Anna Yates students really enjoyed the high school students on the campus to lend a hand. Both ASB leadership teams are looking forward to. Both ASB leadership teams are looking forward to doing more events and community service together. NEH's ASB leadership team have been discussing many different ways to improve student life and will meet with Ms. Lathan on issues such as student leadership conflicts, meditation teams, and suggestion boxes for the 7th and 8th grade classes so that students' voices will be heard. Also, NEH's ASB Drama Club and the city of Emeryville are hosting a canned food drive, and we would like you guys to drop off canned goods to the NEH's man office to help support their effort. For Emory Secondary School, thank you to everyone that helped support the senior class last week by ordering pasta pomodoro from the Bay Street Emeryville location. And also, please join me in congratulating our boys soccer team and football team, which are, which both teams are doing an amazing job. Also, the Fall Sports Banquet will be held at the Senior Center at 5:30 PM on the 21st of this month. ASB student leaders are excited about our next meeting to be held on Tuesday, November 19th. This will be a town hall style, a town hall style meeting with the ESS principal. During ESS ASB leadership team meeting, we are brainstorming the many exciting ways to say goodbye to the old ESS campus and hello to the new ECL campus. Some of our ideas include, but are not limited to, the city and school-wide participation, such as inviting ESS alumni to return for a student-led, student-led community celebration at the time of demolition, demolition, sorry. Beginning with a community handheld circle and having a moment of silence for the teachers, parents, and students that attended Emory and worked for the EUSD that are no longer with us. We would like to set up activity tables to allow everyone to write their favorite memories of Emory or a memory box that will be, that will be in places in the time capsule and then placed in the cornerstone of the new ECL building. At some point, we would like to incorporate candle lighting with, and a toast with sparkling lemon cider as part of, as part of the program along with releasing memory biodegradable balloons. Ms. Brenda will talk to Ms. Stillman, our art teacher, and some of the artist's co-ops to see if they will assist us in making a memory mural that can be installed in the new building. At another activity table, we will have the community write well wishes on stones that can be used as a part of the decorations for the community garden, or that will be placed in a fountain in the garden. Those are just a few ideas we came up with from our last meeting. We are excited and eager to be involved with the whole ECL process. Thank you.
That's wonderful. There's way too many things. I'm an awesome, awesome reporter. I'm glad you're here. Superintendent's report.
Yes, so we received word yesterday that the city of Emeryville, from attorney Mike Biddle, that he just wants to let everyone know that we received a copy from, of a letter from the Department of Finance advising us and letting, letting the city know that the successor agency has list, listed the Emeryville funds on the ROPS 1314B list. So what that means is that that list, 1314B list, includes the 21.2 million for the Emeryville Center of Community Life project. And so there is one little process that's left. It has to be approved. It'll be approved by the successor agency on January 1st. Well, it says January 1st, but I don't know if anyone's gonna do it on the 1st, it may be the 2nd. And once that happens, the funds will be officially available for the ECL project. So this is a huge, huge milestone, and we have copies of the letter for you, right in front of you, I believe, so that you, okay, we'll, we'll make sure you get a copy. We have a copy of the letter right here. We'll make sure that you get a copy of the letter to let you know just how excited we are about all that. And then the next item, really piggybacks on Bria's item, the abatement demolition has begun on the ECL site, the old San Pablo facility. And members of the community, you will see green fencing now on the 47th street side of the old campus. And also, on the front and on the side, on the 53rd street side, you will also see posted notices. And those notices will change from time to time as the stages of abatement and demolition change. And what the, what the notices do is they describe the activities that Turner Construction is involved in. So, and there may be times when there'll be notices perhaps about a particular change or perhaps a noise, noise level or something like that. But that's part of the role of Turner Construction right now, is to keep those notices current. And I'll make sure that you have them here also, and we'll make sure that we let the public know what they are. So right now, they're involved in the staging of the, the green fencing, the posting of notices, and then going into the internal part of the building and actually tearing down the, doing the, just the asbestos and abatement, tearing out the internal walls of the, of the facility.
So can I ask a question? Are we sending out a notice to the neighbors that are living around, around the area? Are we posting up signs, but are we also, I know we're posting, but are we also mailing to those residents that are in the community-
So there aren't, there aren't-
Within 500 feet, something like that?
Yeah, so there aren't mailing notices for all the specific activities that are going on? That would, that would be probably a significant expense. But, but there are website notices on the ECL website, and also notices that are, that are posted. From time to time, there may be a big, a big activity, and for that activity, there may be notices that will go out.
So for example, I would think that notices should have went out for demolition and abatement, to let the community, to let those neighbors know that this at least will be happening in a certain period of time.
That would be unusual. I mean, we did quite a bit of noticing of the neighborhood, and we already sent out notices within a large radius of the property-
When?
For the recently approved-
We did that for the, for the-
For the CEQA.
CEQA, for the CEQA process.
So we, we notified them it was gonna be torn down during CEQA. There was a public hearing process. We did get members of the, of the neighborhood who had gotten notices, who expressed their concerns about, we had one person expressing concerns about bird nesting and a whole variety of issues.
Okay, okay, okay.
So I think, and then in addition to those notices that have already gone out, so it's been well noticed over a period of time, we, Roy, it's my understanding that, that as part of the DTSC process, you know, if there are any toxics being hauled off the site, that there may be additional noticing depending on-
That's correct.
... the degree of toxics that might be found when people dig into the earth.
So can we, can we move this to the ECL conversation?
Okay.
Can we hold it and just use this for the report? So those are great questions.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, yeah, okay, thank you. And then the, I just, I just wanted to reiterate the, that the senior class and the ASB are working on the cornerstone and farewell event for the facility, and they've come up with a tremendous list of ideas that is gonna be owned by this, by this, by the class, and we're really excited about that, and great, great to see that. You'll, we'll have an announcement that will go out about the date shortly.
If the art program wants to raise funds for the arts in Emeryville, I'd love to buy a little piece of, if you're gonna sell little plaques with pieces of the school, we can-
We, we're not quite sure if we'll have that kind of capacity to do that sort of thing, but there are definitely a lot of ideas that are being noodled on right now, and we'll make sure that whatever it is, it'll be a wonderful celebration. I mean, the, the student ideas are just amazing. And the time capsule, we've, we've started collecting, you see in my office, there are minutes that go back to, you know, 1937, bound, bound notes that are typed, yearbooks. We have probably, we probably have 50 yearbooks that are, that are in the office. And I just want to also put a plug out to the community, any alumni that have mementos, let's get those, get those to my office. We'll make sure that the students take a look at them and sort them out, and we can figure out what's gonna, what's gonna be put in the, in the cornerstone time capsule. So, yeah, very, very exciting.
Are we gonna, are you allowed to alumni committee to be involved with this?
I think we'll, we'll-
To talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm there. I'm a proud alum. I, you know, I have to mention that.
All right.
And I'll make sure I'm engaged, absolutely. I'm on weed right now, remember? All right, thank you.
You have nothing but time.
I have nothing but time. I hope to go back to work next week, so we'll see. But we'll now move on to board president's report. And what I wanted to report out this evening is essentially a little bit about the process that the board is undergoing as it relates to our superintendent's retirement announcement. Essentially, the board is undergoing a number of, or we have had, a number of discussions related to requests for proposals to engage a search firm. And so that process was finalized this evening in terms of our, the documentation that we needed to actually issue that and then now request or receive responses for search firms. And so that process is underway. We will make sure that the information that we are issuing will also be on our website to make that available to any members of the public. But we definitely want to ensure that, you know, that as much communication, early communication about areas where the community definitely has access to any of the consultants that we do bring on, will have the ability to, you know, bring comments or thoughts as they relate to the profile of the superintendent. So those things will be happening. So just wanted to make sure those who are present this evening and those watching from home are aware that the board has undergone and has now initiated the search firm process for that next piece of work. So I just wanted to bring that forward. We do plan to, as it's actually set out in the RFP, the board will be interviewing finalists' search firms on December 18th in a special meeting. So that will take place, that's, that date's set in stone, and so that's what the next step, the next large step, I guess you could say, in this process will be. So I just wanted to bring you all up to date on that. After that, that's it for me. And there'll be board comments following that, but I definitely wanted to make sure those present were aware of that. We'll now move on to consent calendar.
Okay. And I'd like to pull Personnel Action, please.
Please, okay.
I'd like to pull item one and item four, please.
Four and four. So one, three, and four have been pulled. How about we take Superintendent's item first? Item three.
Yes. So I wanted to pull the item Personnel Action. It, it states my, we need to, we need to add a retirement of Roy Miller to this, and I have a copy of that right here with his letter of retirement. If you could please pass those out to the board.
We have.
You have, you have a copy of it? All right. And I will need you to accept, formally accept, his retirement. And so I want to make an amendment to that personnel list for the public record. And while you're, while you're-
Let's act on it.
Do you want to act on what?
Let's act on that.
Act on that? Okay.
Before we go there with-
Yes.
But, so just to, if we could, if we don't mind, four members, to actually go forward and act on the amendment to this evening's Personnel Action on G3. Can I get a motion to accept the amended item?
So moved.
Have a second.
With great sadness, reluctance, and celebration for his great work, I respectfully second.
All right. And what perhaps we'll do is, can we do a roll call?
Roll call, yes, please. President, eyes?
Yes.
Member Williams Muller?
President.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
Member Simon?
Yes.
Member F. L.?
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes, from South.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, and I just want to say that I didn't do my mission moment earlier as part of my superintendent's report because I wanted to do it now. Because I think that Roy Miller, you embody the EUSD mission in so many ways, and all the guiding principles about high expectations, family, and striving to end racist and classless practices. Your entire time here that I've known you, you have had equity as an outcome of this huge ECL, ECL project as your only, only objective, and it's been really impressive. You brought the ECL project, from what I can tell from all the history of your 11 and a half years here, from a place and time that seemed like the, the dream of the full-service community school was a flickering light, and now it is a beacon. It's a beacon of hope for the children and families of Emeryville and the Emeryville community, and you did that. You held not just the brick and mortar ideas of ECL together, but you held, held the very soul of this project here, the essence of it, together for the board and the city council and for, for superintendents and two state administrators. What you have achieved is remarkable, and the community is really, really saddened by your retirement. We're happy for you, but we're also sad at your retirement announcement. There've been some many, many trying times in this project, and you have been a solid rock. And you have been just a great team player as a, for me, as a superintendent, moving, moving the ball down the field and the ECL project down the field as others have done. We're losing a treasure, Emeryville community. He is indeed an asset, and his departure is a sad one. You will always be part of the Emeryville community and family, and your legacy will be evidenced when that building opens in the fall of 2015 with the Full Service Community School initiative fully blown and working in it. It's been a privilege and honor to work with you.
I was just gonna say, as, as Mr. Miller comes forward, just as a longtime board member and extreme advocate for this project, I think when there were so many doubts and so many questions of whether or not, and can we do, and is this possible, and through all the transitions this district has had in terms of leadership, which it has had, it is very evident that the board and our strength and belief in this, that it is possible, and having you as an advocate, a strong advocate for this project, has only solidified what this community will receive in the end. And I think it stabs me, for sure, because I know your face, I can tell what you're thinking sometimes. And I also know that I look to you instantly when I'm thinking about center of your life. And I think, you know, we will, we will be hard-pressed to find a replacement. And I don't think it's our goal to replace you. I think we can only do our best to just keep pushing forward. And I do want to respect and honor your wishes to, you know, accept this, but, okay. Because one day I'll retire, one day, one day somewhere. But, but I do, I do really want to extend, you know, my appreciation and congratulations to you as you choose to make a transition. And I think that's really important to, you know, always be in control of your destiny. So I really want to applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would like to say, if you were, if there are board members who wish to talk and say things about you and to you, so-
So I'll, I'll sit down for that. This is the most awkward, I think, I've felt in terms of approaching the board. I care deeply about you all. I care deeply about the work that you're engaged in. I know it will move forward. I feel secure in that knowledge, and I feel like all that you've started is actually going to come to pass, and, and you all should be very proud of that. I will miss each and every one of you. I will remember this. I was thinking today, it hadn't actually occurred to me until I started thinking about it today, but about a third of my whole career has been spent here with you, and I feel privileged about that. My goal was to be of service, and, and I hope I was. Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'm not even starting with joy. She's got, she's got her, my feet up here.
She's already cried.
Hey, what?
Sure. Well, I, I'd just like to say, Roy, you've, you've, in my work doing community development, you've been a role model. And you've, in, in a educational institution here, um, you've, I've learned an enormous amount from you and the way you've carried yourself and the way you've, um, stayed focused on the work throughout all the distractions and all of the concerns, always keeping an eye on what's best for kids, what's best for families, what's best for, um, making sure that we have a sustainable education. So I, I greatly appreciate, um, what you've, what you've done. A number of my career decisions have been shaped by your example, and I really thank, thank you for your great work.
Okay. Roy, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I definitely echo, echo my colleagues, but I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, for all your commitment and your dedication. I mean, we couldn't have gotten this far without you. And, you know, for me to be, um, one of the governing Board members to try to see this vision to fruition, I thank you because we couldn't have gotten this far without you. So good luck, and may God bless you.
Uh, Roy, you know, thank you for, for bringing and guiding this project to, to the point where you can leave. Uh, yeah, I wish you wouldn't. Uh, I wish, you know, uh, you'd ride off in the sunset when, when the, uh, the building's built, the MOU is operating flawlessly and, and everyone's, uh, singing kumbaya around the building. But, but, you know, we probably shouldn't wait for that day. But you can ride off knowing that, uh, that, that, uh, all the pieces are in place, that the 21 million is coming down, the, uh, the demolition is happening, uh, and that, that, you know, this is, this is going to happen. And we do have a, a solid design, uh, that's a product of a lot of good thinking, a lot of community input. Uh, and, and a process for continuing to, uh, improve and, um, the, the Center for Community Life, uh, as we move forward. So all of that, I, I thank you for bringing us to that point. And, uh, in terms of your service beyond that, you know, I just want to acknowledge that you have always approached this work from the standpoint of social justice. And you have taught me that there is such a thing as thinking about space, uh, from the standpoint of social justice and how to, uh, promote equity and, and, um, and how to promote, improve people's lives. So I did not realize that there was such a thing as social justice architecture, but I do now. So thank you for that.
I'll try. You know I'm gonna cry. Um, first, I'm sorry I'm late. It's a rough day at work. Roy, I appreciate, I'm not gonna get through it. I appreciate your passion.
See?
We appreciate it.
Just what we have, our student rep would like to make, and please, if there's public comment at this point, please come forward, if you will, Ms. Dunn.
Um, I haven't known you for that long, but I haven't been a part of the Board for that long either. But, um, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done in our community, and I appreciate it, and congratulations on your retirement, even though we're gonna miss you.
Two things. I came to this district about eight or nine years ago, and one of the people, about four years in, we were getting ready to look at, uh, school-based health center, and we had nothing. We were in the, the old, um, high school, and we were looking at the, um, research and development room where it had all the, the, um, the, what is it, the metal shop and all the rest. And Roy and I walked through one day, and I knew Roy was a man when he said, "Let's cut some holes in the roof. Let's put in a skylight. Let's paint the, paint the, the, the ground, the cement. We'll make it look like a street. We'll put out ferns. We'll put all this stuff." And he actually drew up all the plans for it, which I still have. And I went, "That's my kind of guy. He's, he, he thinks out the box. He never says no. He comes up with things." And we even had pricing for it and everything. Fortunately, we went to ECCL, but we were gonna have a school-based health center and a rec room and all kinds of other stuff, which is now going to come into fruition. But my point being this, you never said no. You always tried to find a way, and I appreciate it.
That's great. Wow. Any other public comments?
So, good evening, public comments. Like was Dunn stated. Anna Karita Allen, Director of Curriculum Instruction. So I would like to say, in terms of, um, the work that Roy has brought to this district, it, a lot of times when you start the work or you're in the work, um, it does seem like it's a never, it's an unappreciative job. And what I will state is that I've seen sometimes Roy, he's a lot more elegant and eloquent than I am, in terms of when you stand in the work and you deliver the work, and when you feel like you're being beaten up or someone is, um, attacking you for just doing the job that you're supposed to, that I will state in terms, he always stands in his work and it's, and it's done with, with such grace. I will also state that, um, Roy has always had the vision in mind, no matter when other people came in with their own agendas, he stuck to the course, which was very similar to the work, um, that Joe France had, um, done before he passed. And so I want to say, as a person who, who can relate to, um, being so entrenched in the work and so, and not necessarily patting, you know, yourself on the back, that, um, hopefully tonight, we're all doing that for you. And so in stating that you have done an excellent job, we know that you'll still continue to work with us. And I think, um, holding the vision in spaces where people didn't see it, or holding the vision in spaces where people didn't want to see it, you've always hung in there and you didn't bend. And so I just want to say, appreciate, um, appreciate, I appreciate that, and I thank you.
Let's go ahead. Let's do it, let's do it.
This is a cabinet, this is a cabinet go-around right now.
I don't know who's more surprised that I'm up here speaking, me or Roy. But I will say, for me, you modeled grace under fire.
Mm-hmm.
And anytime it's rough for me, and it gets tough up here, I do try to think what you go through, what you've been through, and how you've handled it.
And I'm certain we will have a lavish gathering. I'm certain, I'm certain. I hope we have something. But I, I really, I think, um, you know, this is one announcement. There's so many, have only been gone for a month. But, uh, I really appreciate everything, and I think, um, like I said, I'm sure as, as these, this announcement rolls out, we'll, we'll have more opportunities for members of the public to address you in a most positive way. And, um, we look forward to, um, our relationship after you, you know, you retire, so it's okay. But, um, thank you. Are there any other comments, um, regarding this topic? So we'll now move back, and I hope I can keep up. We're now back to the consent calendar, um, where we have Item 1 and 4.
1 and 4.
And so, um, warrants, I think, Member Dwin?
Yes.
If I, point of order, if I can just be clear, the, the vote that we approved was not just the amendment, it was actual approval of Item 3.
Right, correct.
That's correct.
Yes, the warrants. I have a question regarding PCM, um, dash G, Inc., for, it seems, on some of the pages, one of one, it seems to be for about total 31,000. Who, who is that vendor? And I see the object 4315. I know 43 has to do something with supplies, and that's a large dollar amount for supplies not to be capitalized. So what's, is there a service, is, or, or what? This company does.
Uh, I believe those are... Mr. Brunet, you can probably verify this for me, but I believe, uh, PCM is the computer, that, part of the computer, uh, so that were purchased by, um, Ryan Choate, our IT Director.
So the $27,000 for, uh, under an object 43, that's not being, that's not being capitalized, it's being expensed. And if these were, um, technology, um, hardware or something of that nature, shouldn't they have been capitalized?
So maybe, maybe I, maybe you can correct me on that.
Typically, they would not be capitalized because they're under $5,000.
A piece?
A piece.
Okay, that's, okay, that's good. You might want to stay up there. So, and, and then the, um, vendor right above that, Myers Restaurant Supply, I see on the warrants, they're $22,039.80, but I see on the ratification, um, contract list, they're listed at $22,039.80. Is that a typo?
I think the ratification was a quote that we got, and the actual invoice was the 22039.
Okay.
And those were for the warmers and food service that we spoke about earlier, a few meetings ago.
Right. Okay. Um, okay, that's fine, thank you. Um, I can move to the ratification contracts now.
I, I had some questions on, uh, the warrants as well.
Really?
You already covered, I had the same question about the, the PCM G, so glad we covered that. The mono price on page one for 1,500, do you have any, uh, recollection as to what that's about?
Those are for iPad covers and iPhone covers, um, that help protect the...
iPads.
The computers from dropping and scratching screens.
Important items.
But you, so, I see that that was coded under 4415, which is items between, what, 500 and 5,000, supposedly, 4,400, the 4,400 object. So I guess where I'm going is, how come the computers wasn't also coded at, at least a 44 instead of a 43? Now since my colleague came, says, um, am I making sense? Because you said that the computers, the PCM G, they were between, the reason why they weren't capitalized, because they were under 5,000, which is, which makes sense. So then my next question is, how come they were coded to a 43 instead of a 44? When the 44 is a coding, anything between 500 and 5,000?
I would have to actually pull that invoice to let you know.
Okay, you can give that.
And, uh, maybe I can go do that and have the answer when I give my financial status report to both the questions.
Okay. I'm, I'm not, I, I can wait, it doesn't have to be tonight for me, I can wait.
We can hold these warrants, correct? If that, if that question, um...
Well, I can find the answer by the, by my financial status report.
We can hold it to that if that's, um...
I'm, I'm sorry, but she's just kind of got me going with you.
That's all right. Uh, the second item, you, we're gonna report back to us on the 1250 for the pizza purchase from the last time warrants?
Right, that's a à la carte menu. Spoke to Ms. Dunn, and they serve that every day, uh, as all, à la carte snack.
We buy from roundtable pizza to...
Yes, we do.
And, and then we sell that and get revenue off of it?
That's correct.
Okay, so we actually may have made money off of that investment?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
It's a hot item at the high school.
Apparently. Low fat.
And it's low-fat.
Whole grain, low-fat roundtable pizza, who knew?
Do we show the, the offsetting income item someplace?
So, are there any other questions on the warrants? And perhaps we can just hold that over? Board members like to hold it over to the financial report section for approval?
I'm fine, I'm fine if everybody else...
It's just to prove it.
I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm okay approving it. You know, I did have one more question on the school services, uh, uh, well, we have school innovations and achievement, 2,800 on page two, and then school services of California, 700 on page four. Are those monthly amounts? Um, and like, what do we, what do we pay in a year contractually to those two entities?
The school services of California is for workshops. We went to one on the LCAP. And then we're going to one, we just signed up for the governor's budget in January. Uh, also, the, uh, school innovation and achievement is for a, attention to attendance, it's a kind of a software package that the schools use with regard to truancy notification and recording when schools contact parents, and when we get notices out to, uh, parents with regard to truancy, and when appointments are set up with regard to that for our students.
All right, thanks.
Any additional questions, Board members? Okay, um, so was that the completed four, Item 4? Did you get your questions?
Um, we're on four now?
We're on four now.
Yes. Um, so, I have a request for the next facilities, based on this contract ratification, for the next facilities committee meeting. If we could be shown all the vendors that are not, that are not related to construction? So any vendor that we are using or using funds out of Measure J, whether they be one-time or reoccurring vendors outside of construction, can we, can we be shown that list?
Yeah, absolutely.
You mean from the beginning of Measure J through the present?
Well, I'm really starting, I'm, well, actually, no, I'm starting from, I'm talking about from now going forward.
So provided a current list, the vendors not...
A current list, right.
Okay. Okay. Any other, um, questions about Item 4? Um, so if we, if you could, um, note that on Item 2, I, I wasn't here, so I'm gonna abstain from that vote. But, um, if we could probably do it a little separately, if it's okay for you guys. Um, Item 1, uh, 4, and 5, is there a, a motion to approve those three?
So moved.
Um, any objections to that?
Objection.
Uh, roll call, please, for Items 1, 4, and 5?
President Dice?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
Member Simon?
Yes.
Member Ethel?
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Thank you. And then for, um, Item G2, minutes of the regular October 23rd, um, meeting, uh, can I get a motion for approval on that, those?
Uh, so moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Um, any objections? I will abstain from that, so, uh, no objections, and one abstention for me. Um, and did you want to do a, well, we've, yeah, we're done. Okay, so we'll now move on to Item H1, sunshining of the CSEA initial proposal for 2012-13. Dr. Lindo?
Yeah, so, um, this is our opportunity to, for the Board to consider the, uh, sunshining of the CSEA contract. And I have Marion Harrell, who is going to go through, uh, there are three, uh, we can probably just have you stay up, uh, Marion, and we can go through all three of the, um, sunshining, um, categories. The first is, uh, sunshining of CSEA initial proposal for 1213, which is the retroactive. Uh, the second one is the, uh, sunshining of CSEA initial proposal for 13 through 16. And then the, the third is the sunshining of the, uh, uh, initial proposal of EUSD, um, with CSEA. So, um, none of these items tonight require your action, it's just for your information and consideration.
Great, thanks.
Miss Harrell?
Information only.
Any questions?
There's, not that, they're, okay, thank you, very cool.
That was easy-peasy. That was like 1, 2, 3.
Was that just Item 1 or 1 and 2? 1, 2, and 3. Uh, I, okay, so I had a question.
You want to take them one at a time? Let's stick...
Yeah. Not on 1, but on...
So you have a question on, uh...
2.
2?
All right, yeah. Well, I noticed a conflict in that there must be an answer to it, but there, the document in two says that our current agreement expires in June 2013, and our version says June 2012. So it should just.
I agree with that simply as a typo.
Okay, so, and the reality is?
The contract did expire in 11. We are going to negotiate.
In 11 or 12?
12. We're going to negotiate 12-13 first, and then we'll move into the 13-16.
Okay.
Item two, if there was any questions about it. So any other question?
I do have a question.
Which one are you on?
This is for the initial proposal for a one-year contractual agreement for 2012-2013.
Okay, item one.
Right, under Article 11, salaries?
Hmm.
Okay, where I'm confused is the second sentence, when it says bargaining units members shall receive a separate check for the amount no later than November 30, 2013. How can that, I don't understand that.
Okay, again, these are articles that are being sunshine. This is what's being requested, this is what will be discussed.
Okay.
This has not been agreed upon, this has not been negotiated, this is simply saying, this is what we want to talk about, this is what we're asking for. So, that's it.
Okay, so they would like to be paid by November 30? Is that why?
That's how I read this.
Okay, all right, I'm just.
Okay.
This is the public process where we're informed of what's going to be negotiated.
All right, I'm fine.
Any other questions on items one through three while Ms. Harrell is standing there?
I'm good.
Okay.
Nope.
Well, I guess we look forward to a positive outcome, so thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item H4, English Language Development Program.
Yes, so the purpose of this item is to provide the board with the update on our ELL program, our English Language Learner Program, the program goals of the English Language Development or ELD test results, ELL services, ELAC recommendations, challenges, and strengths will be shared. Tonight, we have Anna Kreta Allen here, our Educational Services Director, and also Kim Miller, who is our ELD Coordinator, here to give you that overview of the program. And I also need to note that we see our teacher on special assignment, Sharice Cologne, our coach, here, and don't know if she's here for part of the presentation or is it?
She's supporting.
Support, there you go, all right. Just wanted to acknowledge your presence here, thank you very much.
Hi, so I wanted to kind of go over some of the same things I went over last time I was here and update you on some new things. So the major goals of our English Learner Program is to develop proficiency in English and to provide English learners access to the core curriculum. These are our English learners by SALT scores. You can see we have the highest number in kindergarten, and as they move up through the grade levels, they progress and hopefully are reclassified within five to six years. There are a few students that are at the high school, some of those students have come to our district at the high school level and are newcomers, and others are long-term English learners. As of this year, we have, let's see, we have six long-term English learners at Anna Yates, and there are eight long-term English learners at ESS. And right now, according to our master plan and what we attempt to provide, is we give English learners ELD until they are reclassified as being fluent in English, and then once they are reclassified, we have to monitor them for two years. And we monitor them on CST, by their SALT level, and then also on their benchmark assessments to make sure they're making adequate progress. Right now, to make sure that all English learners are receiving ELD, we do ELD learning walks, myself and two other teachers and usually Ms. Cologne, and sometimes administrators or other staff, we go through the classrooms and look for evidence of instructional strategies that are proven effective for English learners, and that is having a language objective for the content that they're teaching, using response frames, teaching explicit academic vocabulary, encouraging students to speak and write in complete sentences, and also modeling those complete sentences for the students, and having structured student talk opportunities. And as you can see, over the years, this is where, this is our last one, October 23 was our last learning walk, we've made some good gains. We were at 100% with teachers using response frames this time, and at 93% with complete sentences and structured student talk opportunities. And what's really nice about this is that we started in 2011, but many of these things we're seeing in the Common Core now with the Listening and Speaking Standards. So we're already ready to go into the Common Core with the Listening and Speaking Standards. Last year, at the end of the year, I think Dr. Lindo shared some recommendations that the DLAC made at the end of last year. The DLAC would really like to see more tutoring and after-school programs, summer school, additional homework help and intervention programs for English learners. Additionally, professional development for teachers and supporting the English learners in the classrooms. They were hoping that a Spanish-speaking secretary could be hired at Anna Yates when they were hiring last year, and that to have more consistent Spanish language translation. Right now, we have about 18% Spanish speakers in, at Anna Yates, and we need to do a better job of communicating in Spanish. And then also parent education, English classes for parents, parenting classes, and nutrition, cooking, those types of classes.
Do we have only a DLAC or does each site have an ELAC?
Well, now with the local control funding formula, it was, because we didn't have any carryover in funds, and we actually didn't even have any Title III funds last year, we don't have an ELAC for each school site, we've switched to just having a DLAC. And that is mostly so that the DLAC then can be a part of the local control accountability plan.
Well.
And also because we don't have very many students at the high school, there's only eight English learners, so we're not required to have an ELAC at that site.
What's the minimum requirement for?
I think it's 20.
20 students?
Mm-hmm.
What does DLAC stand for?
So a DLAC is the District Learner Advisory Committee, and an ELAC is just English Learner Advisory Committee, so it's a site level.
So last year, and we used to combine ELAC and DLAC because we are so small, and we didn't get enough turnout from the high school's parents. Now that we've combined it, just calling it DLAC, we actually had more parents at our initial meeting from the high school. So, I don't know best practices, but we are still having parent meetings around English learners, and we are following what's required of the DLAC, and we hope to be a part of the LCAP.
Yeah, the LCFF doesn't, expects that if we have an ELACs that they have input into the LCAP, and if we have a DLAC that they have input into.
Yeah.
So, yes, I didn't follow your comment about, we changed practice to accommodate the LCAP, but.
I'm sorry, we changed, oh.
Your comment that we changed our practice.
Because the DLACs were so required, but the ELACs weren't required anymore under LCAP unless you had carryover funds from the previous school year.
I guess I would dispute that.
Oh, okay, that was what was told to me by ACOE, and I know that there's a recommendation still to continue with ELACs from Californians Together, but because our district is so small, and we used to kind of run it as an ELAC-DLAC anyway, we just kind of switched to calling it a DLAC because it's just Anna Yates' parents, including, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, whatever.
The sites combined, yeah.
Whatever we can, participation we can get from the high school.
So I could go back to calling it DLAC-ELAC, but mostly we're kind of trying to make some general recommendations as a district, and we're thinking as we go to the K-12 campus, that's going to be the case also.
I guess whatever we call it, I would want the, first of all, I think that some of the requirements for having an ELAC and a DLAC come from federal law?
Yeah.
You say, you know, we don't get Title III funds, but we could in the future.
Well, we have Title III funds, and we are fulfilling the requirements for that Title III accountability. It's not that we're not fulfilling the requirements.
Right. But to get back to my main point is, whatever we call it, I think that the committee of parents should feel empowered also to be making suggestions about what Anna Yates needs in terms of improving its instruction for ELs at Anna Yates?
Yeah.
As well as having sort of the dual mindset of, and what should we as a district be doing?
Yeah, and I would say that the recommendations from last year were mostly for Anna Yates because it was mostly Anna Yates' parents. This year, we had a few parents from the ESS attend the first meeting, and so I believe they understand that. Our two chairs for DLAC that were submitted to ACOE into the state are both Anna Yates' parents.
Okay, so I guess it's, I'm requesting that you, as the staff administrator of that process, make sure they understand that.
Okay.
They should be thinking of what do we need here at Anna Yates', and what do we need as a district?
At the high school, yeah, and I think, yeah, okay.
And just one final point for the board, mostly is just to call attention to the fact that the LCFF law does specifically say that the district needs to consult with the DLAC and get their feedback on what should go into our LCAP, and specifically says if we get comments from the DLAC, maybe the ELAC too, but certainly the DLAC, that the superintendent has to respond in writing to comments from the DLAC. So they do hold a specific objective or purpose within the structure.
The only question I had, how many parents do we have on the DLAC-ELAC committee?
So we have, at the last meeting, there were, I don't think I have the roll, but I think, yeah, at the last meeting, there were approximately 10 parents, yeah. Three of those parents were from the high school, and the rest were from Anna Yates.
Thank you.
And we have two parents that are sharing the chairperson position, and they, I submitted their names for training because Californians Together was providing training for parents that are chairing DLAC this year.
And who are our parent chairs?
Elizabeth Avila, right there. And Veronica Mendoza.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're both parents.
That's a good turnout for this district.
And well, and we found that I try to have the meetings in the morning, and that's really helped attendance because we get them when they're dropping off their kids, and then they come to the meeting, so that's worked out. So some of the changes that have been made and some of the strengths of our program right now is that we're doing the learning walks still, and we're seeing progress in the teaching strategies being implemented. We have identified our long-term English learners at Anna Yates' and at the high school, and we develop catch-up plans for those students. This year, we're implementing a research-based long-term English learner intervention at Anna Yates'. I'm working with all the students that are in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to improve their academic listening, speaking, and writing skills. And then we're also implementing a research-based kindergarten intervention at Anna Yates' this year. I'm doing a supplementary program that's after-school for kindergarteners three days a week, and it's for English learners. Included in that program, I'm also working with some other struggling English learners throughout the grades at Anna Yates', but the primary focus is to provide supplemental intervention for kindergarten students, and I'm hoping to see good results from that. We're still working on providing more consistent ELD instruction, especially at the high school. The high school students, there's very few of them, and so it's hard to have a separate class. There is some cushion support, but it needs to be more fleshed out and developed. We need to work on SADI strategies and training for teachers. And then the challenge is always with English learners is they need support for five to seven years to become fully fluent in English. And so this is also based on the recommendation by Californians Together is that English learners can't be forgotten in the Common Core. The Common Core raises the stakes for everyone, especially around the language in the nonfiction texts and the speaking standards and listening, and the reading and writing with showing evidence. So we need to make sure that we're providing support for our English learners and giving teachers professional development around how to scaffold for the English learners and to provide extra support. And I don't know, if anybody has more questions?
So, the thing that sort of jumps out at me is, and jumped out at me last February when we spoke, is that we seem to be doing a reasonable job with ELD, English Language Development Instruction, which is the focus on getting our students to, you know, speak and read and listen academic English. But it really is a separate discipline almost, the academic content instruction, as SADI stands for specially designed academic instruction in English.
Yeah.
And it is, I know you appreciate the.
Very much.
The federal law, from the Supreme Court to the Office of Civil Rights at Department of Ed, to the California Department, very clear in the case law on this, that we have a dual obligation to teach English and to access the core content. And there are different ways to do that, you can use bilingual instruction and simultaneous access, you can teach English first and later come in with the content, you can, SADI is sort of a California-developed approach that other states have followed, which is this sort of using scaffolding language, more simple language, but to convey the same complex kind of content. It doesn't seem, as you say, that we are doing SADI consistently, in some cases, not at all.
Yeah.
So it seems like we're not delivering on a half of our obligation here in some respects. So how can we be doing a better job of that? What are the additional personnel or materials or professional development or administrative support that we need to make that happen?
Well, I think it probably needs to be kind of always included in any professional development we do, whether that be around mathematics curriculum, or the Common Core in mathematics, or the Common Core in ELA, or, you know, the next-generation science standards, but it needs to be included. And those methods always have to be thought about, and English learners always have to be included in any of the PD that we do. I think that keeping it separate creates some of the problems, although, you know, you can't say we teach ELD all day, it has to be a separate program, but those strategies could be used all day. And those strategies would help all of our learners, and we have, you know, a 74% English learner and low free and reduced lunch population, so it's not like those strategies would be effective for all of our students. So I think we just have to be more cognizant of including those strategies when we're doing our professional development.
Well, I mean, the reality is it is, for the most part, the same teacher, particularly at the elementary levels, who are delivering the ELD and the academic content.
Well, I work with the beginning and early intermediate, and then those stuck intermediate English learners, I do a pull-out program with them, and so the teachers are.
On ELD?
Yes, just ELD.
Right.
And the teachers are expected to work with them at those, with those higher-level students that stay in their class, and that's why we do the learning walks, to make sure that they're teaching the language with those higher-level English learners.
So how do the lower-level English learners, and by low, I mean lower SALT scores more, how do they get SADI?
Well, they get SADI through their classroom.
How do they get the academic content?
Yeah, you're right, it's the classroom teachers with the SADI. Is that what your clarification is?
Yes, so the academic, so you're right.
Yeah.
You corrected me that you're pulling out on the ELD.
Yeah.
For the low to mid.
Yeah.
And, but on the, so on the higher-level performers, they're getting both ELD and SADI from their.
Hopefully, all students, that's the goal, is that all students are getting both ELD and SADI.
Right.
Because they all need it.
So maybe my biggest concern is really with the low to intermediate EL students, how are they getting SADI?
In their classrooms.
Yes, so. Yes. So are we doing enough to support the teachers?
No, I think-
To make sure, the checking that they're giving SADI, that they're structuring scaffolding?
I think that that's one area that we could really improve in. And that's what I mean, is that as we're enrolling the Common Core, and as we're, also, the new ELD standards will be, come into effect, that we need to take all of that into account, and to make sure we're incorporating the SADI standards along with those, I mean, the SADI strategies along with the standards.
Can you go back to the fifth slide with the walkthrough data on it?
How do I go back?
Just press the back button.
Okay. How do I do it?
Get the mark, Mark.
I can't hear anyone.
Get the IT guy.
Curry's mumbling.
Call the-
IT support.
Call the IT support guy.
Call Ryan at home. Okay. So now, I, okay. Oh, it's this one. Okay. So which one did you want to go to?
The next one, I think.
The next one.
Yeah, the walkthrough data.
Okay.
Previous. There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so that data is reporting on-
The classrooms.
On ELD sort of strategy uses.
Yeah, in the classrooms.
As observed. And that, should we be doing similar walkthroughs on SADI strategies and mapping how well that-
Yes, but I think that teachers also need professional development prior to.
Okay.
And it might not, so because all teachers are GLAD certified or certificated, and because they're probably, a lot of them have had GLAD training in the past, or guided language acquisition design, is that what it is? I think they've had the training a long time ago. So some of it could be a refresher, but then we also have some teachers that may not be familiar with some of the strategies. So I think, you know, professional development would be in order, and then we could choose some strategies and do a SADI learning walk. It could be either.
So I think that's right, and I guess that I would request that we, you know, consciously implement some SADI professional development, and that we see in your next presentation evidence that that's happened, and that a similar kind of learning walk on SADI strategies has, at least to establish a baseline, has taken place.
Yeah, okay.
There's one other point that I wanted to make on that. So thank you, Ms. Miller, for this presentation. The other point that I wanted to make around the recommendations for 1213 had to do with the secretary in the front office. So we did post the position, you know, as a Spanish-speaking, as an option, as preferred, but we weren't able to have any candidates that were, that fit that category. But what we did do was, we increased the number of hours for translation and support in the front office. So, just so that you know that it hasn't been completely forgotten, but that there-
So what does that mean?
Ms. Hernandez has been given additional hours.
Okay, great. And how are we doing in terms of the translation of documents, which was also one of the D-LAC's recommendations?
I think that some things get translated. I don't see everything that goes out from the school office or from the district. We do have the report cards translated into Spanish, case six.
You mean the SARCs?
No, actually, I'm talking about-
Oh, the actual student report cards.
The actual report cards. So there are some documents that are translated. And so, and students, and teachers use Ms. Hernandez when they need translation for their conferences or for report card comments. And then also, if parents need help with the homework, translating homework, she does that. I can't honestly say how many letters go out that are translated into Spanish from the school office.
Yeah. So, do, what is our process for determining what's a material document, which is the standard in the ed code?
Currently, it's my understanding, I know there are some documents that the sites turn, put out, that are generally communicated in Spanish. Also, they do translation there, but all of our required legal documents are put out in Spanish as well.
Is our SARC, are our SARCs translated?
I do not believe so. I can check our website on that. I'll get back to you on that.
I should know that, but they should be, if they're not, those-
Come on up.
Come on.
Get the question.
You might be wondering why I'm standing up here. I've been working with Ms. Miller, and very proud too, as well as Ms. Elizabeth. One of the things that we found out is that we needed to communicate a lot more with our Spanish-speaking parents, and be very, very mindful of it. So what we've been doing is working with the two front offices. We've been working with Ms. Wanda Hernandez. I've been looking at different, with Ryan, different processes that we might have with our robocall, to make sure that we always send out all of our information in both Spanish and English. And we're working, and people are becoming more mindful of doing it. We got a little lazy and didn't, but now we are. All the legal documents, yes, but sometimes if the game is coming, or whatever. Because as I talked to parents at parent orientation, that was one of the things, that they really wanted to make sure that they heard everything. We also are working with our translator, translating machine, making sure that's there, so that parents want to talk to each other while we're at a meeting like at the PTO. We'll try, we're trying to get those mechanisms worked up, so that we can mindfully make sure that we communicate in languages that are indicative of the folks who are coming to hear the information from there. One of the things I also found, I work with the Family Resource Center and Ms. Wanda Hundley. We have been actively going to D-LAC meetings, talking to parents, having them come over. They're going to come over and have meetings at the Family Resource Center, and we bring information to them, both in Spanish and English. And Ms. Hundley always translates all of her classes in Spanish and English, just so that we can make sure that people who want to take advantage of our services and resources do. So it's an ongoing process. It's something that we're working toward. We hopefully will have a system, more systems that are easier for everybody to use. But we are keenly aware that we have not, but we are, and we're getting better at it.
The other thing that's being done as well is, for the PTO and other parent meetings, there are student translators at the high school, so that are helping the parents. So, and the students are receiving community service credits for doing that translation. And that's really nice to see as well.
Yeah, I do understand we have Ms. Hernandez, and she helps. We don't get always all the information in Spanish, so it will help. What we really want is a secretary, because a lot of parents in our meetings were complaining that if something happened to their children, should they tell them?
Right.
No, don't get away. Ms. Hernandez is here, so she can let us know or translate.
It's an emergency.
So we really will appreciate it if we can have a bilingual Spanish, English secretary. And, yeah, that's-
I mean, I hear you, and I hear our superintendent. And I think the only thing that kind of, I would say, I don't want to say baffled, but concerned, is that the region that we live in is a very diverse area. And we should, I'm not saying we're not trying, but we should be able to find someone who can speak Spanish in this area, to be able to communicate to our parents. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
We have, I just wanted to, I don't want to leave this comment at all, but I do want to respect that I have a student board member who would like to make a comment. So I just don't want to lose that, while she can hold on to it, because things leave my mind easily, so.
Yeah, I had, I had an experience at Anna Yates', a couple weeks, on the 31st of October, with a child who, she didn't really speak a lot of English, and she needed help. And the fact that I couldn't help her, like, fully, really, really bugged me. So I was wondering if, like, I noticed on your next slide, you said something about after-school programs and tutoring, and for the child to come up to me instead of an adult, I thought that was very helpful. And not all children are, like, would feel comfortable coming to adults, so they'll come to an older person, I think. Having bilingual students to help the younger ones, to like motivate them, and help them learn English, would help a lot, because not everyone can learn a different language. Especially, I am trying. And, yes, and I just think that's something very important for the students, and especially during your after-school programs and tutoring, it would be helpful to have the, maybe the high schoolers or someone who is not a lot older than them, or an adult yet, but like a teenager or an older child.
A mentor.
Yes, a mentor to motivate the child, and let them know that they can go through it alone, if that's something that would help.
That's great.
Good call.
I love when young people refer to themselves as an older person. I love that. I think that's great. You know, I, I mean, I'm just, from my standpoint, it would be, because I can think of ideas on, and they're just ideas, I'm an idea person, so watch out. But I'm just thinking if there was a way, if there's a school that, locally, that probably could, you know, our site, Anna Yates', could be a location where we have an intern for, you know, we're the hub of interns. I'm just curious if there is a program where we can have an intern that could be on-site for Anna Yates' during that, you know, that period, and they get credit. But that's just an idea. I just throw that out.
For an after-school program, is that what you mean?
No, for an actual person that's of help for the district, or for the school site, to have someone there at the school site, not secretary, but whatever role that they could play, but would be available for, you know.
So Ms. Hernandez is our parent liaison, that's what she's called. And so she's there Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1:00 to 4:00.
Someone who's there for all.
Yeah, so she's there three afternoons a week.
Yeah, but, and just to note that I think this is a significant thing that should come back to the board really soon about a solution. Because I do absolutely agree, I've gone, I was a student, as I said earlier, I was a student here at Emeryville, when the population was probably that much more greater, but the diversity of languages was that much higher as well. And I think the more, you know, that we do proactively, and as a district, we have to be, just like you had listed, school board meetings, I mean, we have to be that much more thoughtful about highlighting the fact that that's our obligation. So I think it would be helpful for me, and I don't know if I speak for all board members, but to have a report back on what solutions we could put in play, to have someone there five days a week, if not that one person can do it. But how do we ensure that we're given our best? And it may not, it may not be a secretary. Maybe the pool is just what it is, but I think if there's some creative ways to ensure that parents have that, you know, that confidence, that there's somebody who's going to be there, I think it's significant that we need to monitor. So I just throw it out.
I mean, for me, this is the epiphany of equity. I mean, if we're, right, typifies equity. We're going to talk about equity, and we have students who need these services, then, you know, we need to be providing it for them, and finding ways to do that.
Yes, as you said, we, as parents, we want to feel secure that we're leaving our children in good hands, and they're going to be taken care of.
Right.
And, you know, yeah, and we can receive the call in any language we do speak. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Ms. Dunn, does, did you say that Wanda Hundley is bilingual? Or how does she deliver her classes in Spanish?
She's not bilingual, but she has access to people who speak Spanish, and she's delivering what she does.
You have to speak to the mic that you're-
I know, I'm hot, too.
And while she's coming up, remember, I just want to thank you for making sure that this gets on the agenda, and bringing this subject up, and really asking the hard questions. I thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hundley does not speak Spanish. However, she does have access to people who do. But a lot of our notifications and information she gives to Ms. Hernandez to make sure it goes out correctly and ahead of time in both English and Spanish, as well as people from wellness. We've been working consciously on doing that, so that we can make sure that people understand and understand what's going on. Most of the meetings that we've had, we've had a few Spanish-speaking parents, but we'd like to increase it. And we'd also like to, we've been, I've been, when I first heard about this, I talked to, oh, Lord, what is that woman's name? She's a Spanish teacher at the high school. She helped with the Spanish club, Ms. Critchlow. And she's been, and as well as Ms. Collins, have been getting the students to come and do some translations at different meetings. So we utilize them for service hours. And when I finally get some money, maybe I'll help them to give them a stipend, but right now, it's service hours, so that we can do that. But in terms of a formal person who speaks Spanish, no, but we try our very best to make sure that we have somebody there who can help out. That's why with the translation machine, I just had it refurbished. Ryan's looking at it, making sure it runs, so that we can actually have somebody sit there, put on the headphones, and go for it.
Good, because we're going to need that for the LCAP community meetings.
I helped out, I know.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Happened to fly, excuse me.
Is it, well, anyway, I'm going to let Member Simon speak, and just one more point. So I've heard that, I think we want to report back on how we're going to provide support for translation, or some kind of, at least at Anna Yates', during the, and a report back on when we're going to be doing, and what kind of professional development on SADI, and how we're going to get ready for walkthroughs. So those are kind of the three things that I've heard we want back.
And you are asking me to report back on that?
Uh, I guess I'm asking, yes, you to figure out with the superintendent.
Okay, okay.
When I can do it.
Well, and our next D-LAC meeting is in January, and we're going, planning on doing the needs assessment to help inform the, for the LCAP, to kind of get what's going, the parents are saying they need.
Okay. And one suggestion I'll just throw out to figure out is, you know, maybe it's just a matter of having Ms. Hernandez on the day she's not there, on-call, if not her, someone on-call that we can call if there is an emergency, or a student who needs some help in the office, that we can have some emergency translation.
An on-call system would be best, because there is a lot of downtime. I mean, to actually hire someone to be there for when it's needed, it's tricky, yeah.
Why I'm often thinking about a intern.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
So that's a good suggestion, but figuring out a way that we can call someone.
I just wanted to, so, Spanish is one of the languages in our school. We also have Pujabi, and we have, I believe, Arabic. We have-
Spanish, yeah.
A range of languages spoken. I'm wondering if it's, in keeping with our Member Dwin's comment about ensuring equity, does it make sense for us to have, as a district policy, a policy of maintaining a language skills library at each site, so that as a matter of policy, we find out which of our staff speak which languages, so that the office has the information, and so that we can establish an on-call process, regardless of language, so that if Ms. Williams has a student who comes up to her and you can't translate, you know, you can always go to the office and get the list of the 2, 3, 4, 5, or however many adults who can translate.
There, we could do that for some of the languages. We definitely have students that where no one on staff speaks that language. We have Arabic speakers. Right now, as far as I know, there's no one on staff that speaks Arabic. We also have Vietnamese, and French, and Tagalog, and Korean. So it's definitely more than we could provide for, but those populations are also very small at our school, and many of those parents are bilingual, so it's not as much of an issue. There's only so many parents that ask to be communicated in their primary language, or that don't have skills sufficient enough to understand the documentation. And the only population that we are required to translate documents for by law is our Spanish-speaking population.
And I completely understand, and very reasonable.
Yeah.
I guess the policy question that I have is, since, you know, since we strive to make education access to everybody, as a policy, we don't necessarily ask the question of what languages do you speak. So we could have teachers who we don't know they speak-
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Korean, or they, you know, we did have an Arabic-speaking teacher here for a long time. So, so I guess my, the question is whether or not district staff thinks it's reasonable to come back to us with a policy that the district will maintain, you know, whenever we hire somebody, we're going to just ask, what languages do you speak? And we'll keep that information in the office.
So we do have that on the application, so there's a place where they-
So to the degree we already have the information, I mean, I guess you could do it administratively, but quite frankly, we've brought this up a number of times- but quite frankly, we've brought this up a number of times over the years, I'm wondering if we just have a board policy so that, um, it gets put into standard practice, um, to just keep track of it, and then that's something that could be handed out at the beginning of the year to parents, just so that they know, and it, it opens the doors, and, um, I don't know if there's any personnel reasons why you couldn't give out a list of who speaks what languages, but, um, and I don't mean to turn it into a policy discussion tonight, I just wanted to raise the, the idea that it might be worth coming back to the board with a proposal for a policy, I would certainly support it, um, I'm sure my colleagues will want to discuss it, but it, it becomes a way that we can be more language-friendly, and to the extent when we're hiring, I don't know if it, if it makes sense to, when we're hiring, to look for, um, parents who speak the languages that are not spoken here, or teachers or, or staff that speak the languages, so it's, I wanted to put it out as a policy proposal, and, um, I understand the staff needs to work out the details of...
So, so I, so I think I have a couple of things that I'm thinking about with this, I'm wondering if this isn't something that, in terms of gathering data as part of the needs assessment, um, that we could maybe take a look at, uh, in January, and also if this is something that direct, that the board, the full board is giving direction to beyond, you know, our, our required languages, if this is something you want us to come back and take a look at, we could do that at that time. So, I think, and to combine it with the needs assessment and the, the LCAP conversation, I think that's, uh, I, I love the idea, the thought of it, I think we'll have to go back and think about the policy piece, uh, if that is something that the full board is interested in us doing.
Well, um, just, just for, I think, for me as an individual on the board, I think it would be helpful to have a language discussion, and I don't know what that means, I think we, you know, just in terms of, um, equity as, as not a question, but I think it, it bothers, well, it kind of bothers me that we don't, you know, um, but I think it would be valuable, um, for us to look at it, consider where we are now, where our gaps are, and how do we plug those gaps, um, but I think in, in terms of, you know, to land a certain place right now, I don't know enough, you know, true enough, but I think it would be helpful to have the, the conversation about languages in general, because, um, you know, I, like I said, I went here and Punjabi was definitely high, I mean, um, I, I was, it was everybody at Emory, and it's always going to be that way, and it's always been that way, but I think it's really about, um, how do we ensure that we're, um, communicating, you know, and it's, maybe it's not a big issue, maybe we don't know, maybe it's only one group, you know, one language that we need to address, but we need to know that, so I think it'll be helpful just to have a broader discussion about, um, language.
Yeah, I think Trustee Simon is, uh, making a really good point about full inclusion and being inclusive community and making sure that, that we are, um, you know, making sure that we are communicating with folks and everyone, uh, as best we can.
And maybe there's a regional, there's, it's a regional thing, you know, that this region, there's these, these, these languages are here, I mean, maybe that helps.
But it is a bigger, it is a bigger conversation, to your point, absolutely. So we can, we can, well, I'll take, I'll take this back and, and we can talk about how we can wrap that into a much bigger conversation about, uh, supporting various language learners.
Maria is gonna go first, please.
Okay, um, I have a suggestion for your own call, I noticed I just said Ms. Hernandez isn't always there, um, but I also was thinking about how I said earlier about students, I think, we do have students at the high school who have free periods and like, instead of like calling other people on hiring, I know that's something that you can do, but at the same time, while that's not being done or it's in the process, you guys can have the students and come and help out and translate the ones who are bilingual, especially the ones who speak different languages, because I have met a couple of students that do, that also speak Spanish, because we're also learning Spanish at the high school, but, um, they also do speak Punjabi and Vietnamese and Korean, so there are a couple of kids, and I just think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. Remember Dwin?
Couple of, just a couple of quick questions.
Uh-huh.
Um, how many, what's the total FTE in the ELD program?
The, um, when you say FTE, you're just talking...
How many teachers? Teachers, I guess you can even include ages if you want to.
Um, well, in the, when you say ELD program...
At Annie Yates.
At Annie Yates, it's just, it's all the teachers.
Oh.
Because it's myself, I'm the, I'm the designated ELD teacher and I do pull-out, but then all teachers are required to do ELD and SPIC.
Okay, all right, okay, and do we, and I guess this is for, um, our CBO, do we have a budget for the ELD?
Well, so, um, so it's, it's core, so actually it's Title I and any gen ed funds are, are ELD, and then above and beyond would be Title III.
Okay.
Numbers are our challenge.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional board member comments?
Just following up on your comment that we don't get Title III funds, or we didn't last year, but we do this year.
Yeah, well, the, because of the change this year, but last year, um, we needed to apply for a consortium in order to get direct funds, because we would receive less than $10,000, and we didn't, we applied directly, and so we didn't get any, um, is it, I'm not sure exactly, I think it's, um, migrant funds or LEP funding, Title III.
So we did not...
We did not receive any funds last year, so therefore we aren't required, we don't have our AMAOs this year, we have our AYP, um, our progress, but we don't have the Title III AMAOs because we didn't get funded last year.
Was that a conscious decision not to apply, because it was, you know, it was only going to be $10,000 and...
Well, in the past, we've had trouble with the consortium, because, um, we were signed up for a consortium, um, with districts that were very far from us, and it was really hard to work together as a consortium, it was Mountain House and Sunol Glen, I don't even know where they are, and so it just provided a lot of difficulty collaborating with them as a consortium, and, Anna Creed, do you want to answer more about that?
Yeah, and so going forward, what are we planning to do?
So, basically you have two parts, you have Part A and you have Part IV, so what we have applied for is what you call LEP, Limited English Proficiency, we, we can apply for that as an LEA. Last year, when they actually made the transition from cars, not, we didn't, for whatever reason, they changed the formula, so we weren't funded that. When we went back again to apply, I believe, although it hasn't come out, Kim has, Ms. Miller has, call CD, we will receive those funds, and that's what, that's what we've, we've received over the past several years, is the, um, LEP money, which is link, which is the Limited English Proficiency, so that's Part A of Title III. Part IV of Title III is immigrant, is, are the, is the immigrant funding, we don't have enough students to qualify if, if we apply, so we must apply with the consortium, which the only two districts that we will qualify for is Sunol Glen and Mountain House, and they're very far, that's, that's almost San Joaquin, Wright County, and, um, and it's, and they're smaller than we are, so to actually do all the paperwork and the, and the legwork that has to go into it, it's almost not worth the funding, because you actually spend, you spend that money on administratively alone, so it never actually goes to the students, because we spend all of our time chasing paperwork. So we qualify for Part A, and that's what we will receive.
So are we still in the consortium with, so who are we in the consortium with?
We're not, and, and they have to agree to be in consortium with us, we can't force them to do that as well.
So, so how much are we getting under Part A, roughly?
I'm not, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I don't know at this time.
Tens of thousands or...
We can bring that, it's...
I think it's like, I want to say...
It usually has been, it usually has been around, maybe, it's been from 10 to 30,000 from my understanding, depending on the students and the formula that it's been used.
Sense of the magnitude.
But I, but I know that they've used a different formula this year, and the, last year was a different formula, for whatever reason, I guess we didn't qualify, so therefore this year, um, I actually call CD to help with the cars to make sure that when we applied, um, we would actually receive funding this year.
Okay, that's close enough.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I'm gonna do that, yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Ms. Miller and our D-LAC representative? Um, so I think we, we just look forward to additional reports on this, in this area and the broader topic as well, in terms of language, um, so thank you for the presentation this evening, and I probably, before you, before I forgot to say, are there any public comments to this piece at all? Okay, please.
Yeah, if you have any specific questions that you want me to address at the next presentation, please let me know so that I can address it.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
And Ms. Avila, thank you for, for coming, and I, I think you heard my comment, uh, in conversation with Ms. Miller, that, that we're expecting the, the D-LAC to be thinking both about what Annie Yates needs and, and what the district needs, and we look forward to your participation in the LCAP process.
Yes.
So we'll now move on to, um, item H5, Common Core State Standards.
Yes, so, um, the purpose of this presentation is to provide the board with, Board of Trustees with information regarding the Common Core State Standards, or CCSS, whoops, background information, the purpose of Common Core State Standards, course subject shifts, funding, and a draft transition plan will all be shared by our Director of Educational Services, Anna Creed Allen. Ms. Allen?
She's also going to give a, a brief overview of the Smarter Balance assessments and the spring assessments for 2014.
So, um, tonight I'll give a basic understanding or background for the Common Core State Standards, I know that it has been, um, the term has been used, and, and many cases, we know that there's Common Core State Standards, but we're not quite sure of the background or how it was initiated, et cetera, so my attempt tonight is to, um, address how they were initiated, and in terms of what does that look like, um, at our district, in terms of how we'll begin to, well, we have already started the work, but how we will engage in the work, but I think it's really important for, um, community to understand the background of it, otherwise, when we have the conversations, they're not well-informed to, to actually give, um, informative opinions or informative, um, recommendations. So, the Common Core State Standards Initiative started in the spring of 2009, Governors and State Commissioners of Education committed to the development of, um, the Common Core State Standards, and K-12 in English Language Arts and Mathematics occurred, um, so the initiative was led by the Council of Chief State School Officers and the National Governors Association, and California officially adopted the Common Core State Standards Initiative in 2010. And so what's important to understand is that the Common Core State Standards are not intended to be new names for old ways of doing business, but they are called to take the next step toward, um, student, in terms of taking next, next steps forward with regards to student achievement and college and career readiness. So a lot, so you will hear a lot of information about college and career readiness with regards to the Common Core, um, Common Core State Standards. So, um, the focus as a nation is on college and career readiness, and so the rationale is because too many young people who are receiving high school diplomas lack the skills to be successful in college and, um, and in a competitive global market, so we had students who may have scored, um, high on, high on their state standards, but actually when they were, um, when they started college, then it was very challenging for them to actually complete college, because some of those skills were, were lacking. Um, so today's jobs require different skills, and there's a need for a common definition of college and career readiness, and what the progression entails K through 12. So a variation in achievement levels, there, there's a variation in achievement levels and proficiencies, which means that, um, the same standard is studied, K through 12, often, which is often the case, but you'll see a different variation in what the proficiency means, and also what it means in terms of what that achievement level is. So why is this important for students, teachers, and parents? So it prepares students with the knowledge and skills they need to succeed in college and work, again, its focus is about growth, and it's about what students will be able to do, um, when they are enrolled in college, or when they are in college and once they receive jobs, and, um, and how they actually operate in their careers. So it ensures consistent expectations regardless of student's background or where they live, provides educators, parents, and students with a clear, consistent, and focused guidepost, and includes rigorous content and application of knowledge through high-order skills. Um, previously, our state standards did not focus on higher-order thinking skills, so a lot of time you would hear, well, what about the critical thinking skills, however, the, our former state standards did not actually require that, although I think there was intended, but it didn't, but it actually didn't, um, uh, it wasn't, the state standards didn't, wasn't able to actually achieve that or didn't allow for that. So it also, and so the, it also builds upon strengths and lessons of current state standards, so lessons that have been learned, standards that, um, actually work well, but what the Common Core State Standards do is that they look at all those state standards and they build on them. So the Common Core Standards in English Language Arts, Literacy, History, Science, and Technical Subjects are now combined in terms of the, the through focus is literacy, so it's not necessarily each content area anymore where you have separate standards for each content area, but what you will see is the focus on literacy, and you'll see a through line. So there are three main sections, there's K-5 cross-disciplinary, there's 612 English Language Arts, and then there's 612 Literacy in History, Social Studies, Science, and Technical Subjects. So those three sections are how they are, the Common Core Standards are, are designed, meaning that there, again, is, there's more integration with literacy than it is separation and focus on content area. So there are three appendices to the Common Core Standards, um, the focus on research and evidence, then there's reading texts, exemplars, and sample performance tasks, so as, so again, this isn't, uh, this is an opportunity for parents or teachers to help unpack or understand the standards, and with the appendices, what they do is they help give you the glossary of key terms, they give you examples of what those standards look like, and then they also give you writing samples of what, um, uh, what students should be able to know and be able to do according to the standards. There are four strands, um, there's reading, which includes reading foundational skills, writing, speaking, and listening, and language. Prior to most of the state standards, there was a focus on reading and writing and not speaking, listening, and language. So there's an integrated model of literacy, media requirements blended throughout, so again, there's a focus on the integration, because when you, when you, although you may enter college and you study a certain subject, or a certain area for a degree, or you actually enter the work field, really, you study and you work in an integrated manner and not separately, which is what schools had typically do, is separate content area, and you learn in these, in isolation versus in integration. So three shifts in English Language Arts and Literacy is building knowledge through content-rich nonfiction, the focus is on nonfiction, where previously, the focus has been a lot on narratives and fiction, um, so including nonfiction will also help literacy with science, and will help with social studies, and so therefore, literacy and language skills are not, um, the sole responsibility of our English teachers. Next shift is reading, writing, and speaking grounded in evidence from the text, both literacy, literary and informational, so now students must go into the text and find evidence, and where the questions previous to that were questions of like yes or no, so those are lower-order thinking skills versus a higher-order thinking skills where you must go into the text, and you have to actually make inferences, um, in terms of the questions and what you read, and make, and make more meaning of it. And then the third shift is regular practice with complex texts, and it's academic language, so really, a huge focus on academic language, again, um, language that is necessary for all of our students, particular, in particularly, well, particularly, our English language learners, where cognitively in their own language, a lot of them, a lot of students are high, but it's the, it's the language access that they don't have, and so therefore, um, the way you teach is you focus on vocabulary and language acquisition, and also complex texts, and not necessarily create, um, lessons that are three or four grade levels below, but you actually create them in their, at their grade level, but you have a variety of strategies for, um, students. So those are English Language Arts, and in mathematics, they are organized, the K-8 are organized, what you call by domain, so here are the 11 areas of, um, the domain, I won't necessarily go over all of them, but as you can see, there are some that are focused in kindergarten, there's some K-5, third through fifth, sixth through eighth, and sixth through seventh, so these are the areas that, um, that the Common Core Standards focus on in terms of what students should be able, um, to know and do by the end of their eighth-grade year. Mathematics in high school, high school courses are based on the Common Core State Standards, you can choose two different pathways, a traditional pathway or an integrated pathway, and so the traditional pathway is typically you take your algebra class, then you take geometry, and then you take advanced algebra trig, and then you take pre-calculus and calculus, and integrated pathway is, is a way to... An integrated pathway is a way to actually think about how the mathematical concepts versus what the subject is, and so, therefore, you create an opportunity for students to do what you call some parallel learning. And so, it's more integrated, and you think about also how you can bring in literacy into mathematics. And so, we have not decided whether we'll take a traditional or integrated pathway. However, due to our size, it'll probably be geared towards the integrated pathway. And so, working with Alameda County Office of Education, they'll be able to work with the high school team and then look at data and think about what would be the best way to approach the Common Core Standards. Also, in Mathematics in high school, the conceptual categories are number and quantity, algebra, functions, modeling, geometry, statistics, and probability. So, an example, again, of integrated pathways, you would look at all those concepts together versus waiting for the particular class to study that concept. Eight standards for mathematical practice that describe a set of skills across K-12. So, there are eight that, and this is the focus of mathematics learning. So, number one is to make sense of problems and persevere in problems in solving them, reason abstractly and quantitatively, construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others, model with mathematics, use appropriate tools strategically, attend to precision, look for and make use of structure, and look for and express regularity in repeated reasoning. So, no longer will mathematics be, here's the problem, here's the way you solve it, or formula, and now you have the answer. The focus is not necessarily on the answer, but the focus is on how many ways can you access the information and how many ways can you actually solve that problem to then have a conversation and discourse about the answer. And so, there are five core shifts in Mathematics. To focus deeply on concepts prioritizing the Common Core State Standards, coherence within and across grade levels, fluency with calculations, speed and accuracy, deep understanding of math concepts, application of appropriate concepts, and dual intensity between practice and understanding. So, what the design limitations are of the Common Core Standards are that the standards define what all students are expected to know and be able to do. The standards focus on what is most essential. So, instead of, so, what are the essential standards that will give you the most leverage in terms of learning the concepts? And then, the standards establish a baseline for advanced learning or learners. So, what the standards don't do is they don't define how teachers should teach. So, again, not defining how teachers should teach opens up the opportunity for differentiated instruction. How do you actually provide several opportunities for different learners in your classroom to access the curriculum? So, the days where there's a teacher's manual and you follow the manual is not in alignment with Common Core Standards. The standards don't describe all that can or should be taught. So, again, we leave, our teachers can be the professionals that they are and can actually think about where are their students in a continuum and what is it that they would need to actually master the standard, because some will need more and others will need less, which has been a focus in terms of differentiated instruction. And the standards don't define the nature of advanced work. So, again, Common Core Standards are what you call your baseline work, but not necessarily what your advanced work is. So, therefore, there has to be opportunities for teachers to differentiate instruction for all learners.
So, this right here seems to be more about student mastery. I think you said it once, but it seems like, for me, that's what this is about, right here, the design limitation.
Yes, so, it's students mastering, not only is it what students master, but also how they master it. So, while it doesn't tell, it doesn't tell a teacher in terms of how to teach, but it talks about the strategies that students need in order to master the standards. So, again, it creates a toolbox for the teacher versus there are one or two ways that a child can learn, which is what typically our assessments have been, which are multiple ways. And so, we have measured our student achievement based on one way, so, making an assumption that all children learn in one way. So, technology. Technology is critical to Common Core. So, technology is no longer a standalone subject. It supports core subjects, skills taught as an integration into classroom inquiry. There's an emphasis on publishing and sharing. There's an emphasis on to share work with all students and parents, so to make students work public and to make learning visible. And then, use of tools like blogs, wikis, podcasts, video, websites, and more is critical in terms of Common Core State Standards. So, as adults, whether we like it or not, whether we are ready or not, we must learn how to do this because this is what is required of Common Core Standards. So, that leads into Smarter Balance assessments. So, typically, we know our assessments to be the California State Standards, and which is your multiple subject, which are multiple choice tests. And typically, many of the states also have multiple choice tests. So, with Smarter Balance assessments, it's led by a consortium to develop assessments aligned to the Common Core State Standards in English Language Arts and Literacy and Mathematics. And they are designed to help prepare all students to graduate high school, college, and career-ready. So, the concerns with our current state standards is that it does not help students prepare for college or career. It's inadequate in terms of measures of complex skills and deep understanding. It's limited in use for informing instruction, which is why it was always challenging to look at what are our state standards and how does it inform your instruction. It's challenging to do that because it's very, very, very limited. So, it's heavily used to affect program decisions. So, for years, we have used the California State Standards, the API, the AYP, et cetera, to determine our program decisions. And actually, in many articles or educators who definitely support this performance-based assessments, they talk about the intellectual laziness of us as adults where we want to use a quick fix to address learning versus taking the time to actually understand the complex challenges of learning and what we can do for our children, you know, to make sure that they are better prepared for college and careers. And then, it's difficult to interpret the meaning of scores, and then there's concerns about access and fairness, and I'm sure you all have read several articles that address that. So, the left side is what I just stated, but the assessment shifts are in terms of the next-generation assessments, is that they're rigorous assessments of progress toward college and career readiness. There's Common Cut scores across all consortium states. They provide both achievement and growth information. And what is critical is that it provides achievement and growth. So, you can determine what the growth is of a student, particularly for those students who have had, whether they've traveled from school to school, whether they have, didn't receive basic information in their primary years, but now you can identify what the growth of that child is. And so, therefore, teachers no longer will feel frustrated because they don't have test scores, and principals as well, they don't have test scores that show what students do, but they actually know what they've done, and they can see the growth in terms of the efforts that they've implemented in the classroom. The scores are valid, reliable, and fair for all students except those with significant cognitive disabilities. So, again, really identifying that we do have learners who have cognitive disabilities, and we don't lump them all in one category to state they should know exactly what other students who don't have those disabilities know. The assessments are administered online. That's a shift. I don't know if that'll be a plus or minus, that's to be determined. And then, the assessments also use multiple measures, so multiple choice, open-ended answers, where you can actually unpack an answer and you can choose the way you, you can show your thinking in terms of how you solve the answer. So, there's different, there's multiple measures versus just multiple choice. So, how California will measure that is the CalMAP system, which is the California Measurement of Academic Performance, will replace the standardized testing and reporting program, which is what we typically use as our STAR program. The primary purpose of the CalMAP system is to assist teachers, administrators, and students and their parents by promoting high-quality teaching and learning through the use of a variety of assessment approaches and item types. So, again, just identifying and really focused on performance-based assessments. So, for spring 2014, this is what our assessment plan is, and particularly, this is what it is in California. So, there'll be a field test of the consortium in terms of summative assessments for English Language Arts and Mathematics in grades 3 through 8 and grade 11. Each participating student will take either the ELA or Mathematics Field Test, and that hasn't necessarily been determined yet by the state which one will take, or if we even have, if we even have a choice. Excuse me. So, students will take grade-level science assessments, which includes the California Standards. So, in terms of CSTs, there'll be science, we'll still continue to take the CAPA, which is the California Alternative Performance Assessment, and the California Modified Assessment. And that will take place in grades 5, 8, and 10. So, those are still considered your CSTs or California State Standards Test. The California Alternative Performance Assessment, which is the CAPA for ELA in Mathematics in grades 2 through 11, will still occur. And for grade 11 students, the Early Assessment Program in ELA and Mathematics will occur. And so, the EAP is a program that's still voluntary and has always been voluntary, but we make our students, we require all of our 11th graders to take the test. And so, that test is a test that actually is adopted by the California State System, University System, which is, it's a placement test. So, if students do well in it, then they don't have to necessarily take the placement test at the California State University level, and I think the community colleges are the same way. And then, optional for local educational agencies, we can administer tests in Spanish. We typically haven't done that, and basically, our students have to qualify in order to do that. But this is what is in California, but the first four bullets are bullets that we definitely adhere to. So, our funding areas are, right now, we're working with the Alameda County Office. So, our funding areas in terms of looking at Common Core funding will probably be in three areas, professional development, technology, and curriculum. So, in professional development, I included a draft template like PD from Alameda County Office of Education. So, that just gives you an example of what professional development, what can look like or will look like, but we still modify as we go along. So, we chose our county office because when you actually have to have the LCAP, but I believe also the Common Core State Standard Plan, the county has to approve it, and they'll give you feedback in terms of whether they think it's applicable or it's sustainable or not. So, we might as well work with them now since they are the ones who will be approving our plan. We also, so, Mr. Shaveran, Ms. Lathan, myself, and Ms. Cologne, we attend Region Force System of District and School Support, which is actually a professional development, I think it's a five-day professional development throughout the year that helps us think about how we will lead the Common Core State Standard work in the district. And then, the professional development will also go towards other teacher, principal, staff-identified PDs, such as PDs that either Ms. Miller may bring in terms of to focus on English Language Learners, or if there's a focus on high school in particular, or a focus on math, et cetera. So, those funds will go there as well. Technology, although I know we've purchased laptop carts, but some of the funding will go towards more laptop carts because not only do we need the carts to use for the Smarter Balance, we need to use them to actually practice the test. And when you use them over and over and over, we want to make sure that we have enough of them so we won't run into any trouble when students actually take the test. And then, in terms of curriculum, next three areas to identify curriculum for Common Core in English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Mathematics. And then, questions and comments. So, I know that was, it's very intense in terms of what the Common Core State Standards, but that's a general overview to kind of understand the background.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Waiting for the green light. Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Allen. I had a few questions about, I think it was, actually, it was the last slide related to funding areas.
Yes.
And I know that there were dollars set aside from the governor's budget in terms of funding for, but was it specifically for a specific area?
It was Common Core. So, Common Core, you have a lump sum of funding. And so, what most districts are doing is that they're separating, they're dividing them between professional development, technology, and the third one I stated.
Curriculum.
Oh, curriculum. So, it doesn't mean that you'll divide them evenly, but those are the three areas that you actually address in terms of implementing Common Core.
Okay.
So, but it could include others, but those are the three that we'll look at in terms of where our funding is. But it doesn't exclude other areas.
Only reason I bring it up because I remember, I recall that item or that being an item that we would have, it's only short-term, it's not like it's ongoing funding for, but also that I know that we had done the purchase of, or we're moving toward the purchase of, we haven't done it already, in terms of getting ready for Smarter Balance, in terms of the technology piece.
That is correct.
But also, it helps to know, you know, where our other funding streams are to make sure that this, you know, that what we have, that we're ready for testing as well as implementation, you know, full-on. So, that's why I asked about the funding source.
Okay.
Okay. Any other board questions, please?
Yes, to follow up immediately on that point, the governor did set aside 1.25, 1.5 billion statewide specifically for Common Core implementation. It works out to about $140 a student, and with it, it's to be spent quite flexibly, but it has to be on Common Core implementation. I think, as Ms. Allen says, the three main buckets are professional development, materials or curriculum, and technology. But it does come with some specific requirements, that we develop a plan, we have a hearing, we publish the plan, we have a hearing on it that's not at the same meeting that we adopt the plan, and then at a later meeting, we adopt the plan. So...
That's correct.
So, my question was, when are we going to see this plan? How are we going to spend our share of that specifically? And when are we going to see the plan and proceed with that?
So, the plan will be adopted before the end of the year. Currently, the work that we're doing with Common Core is not using any of the funding that we have for Common Core. So, that funding will not be used until you see a plan, although you can spend it before you actually see the plan. But I think in terms of being transparent and just open, we're not using the funding until a plan is proposed, and that there will be, there'll be feedback from the Budget Advisory Committee and staff, you know, at both sites. And there are particular teachers who have signs that have shown an interest to look closely at the plan in terms of making sure that we're considering all aspects of implementation.
But when will we see?
In the spring.
So, I've got about, at 730 students, our share is 100,000-plus.
Yeah, so, you know, and it's a two, it's a three-year plan, actually, but we'll look at it for the next two years. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Alfred, I don't know what you meant by when you just read.
Yeah, so, I think, I thought it was a two-year, maybe you're right. I thought it was...
So, it is a two-year plan?
This year and next year. We have to spend it in that timeframe.
Yeah, you have two years, and usually, so, in terms of our plan, in terms of what we're, the implementation, you can, trust me, the money will go, will can go quickly on technology and professional development. So, it's, the issue is that we won't lose the funding, but I think we want to also be sure that we are being thorough and intentional about how we implement and what will come out of it, and that our staff, our teachers have a lot of input in terms of what their needs are, in terms of how they will actually implement in the classroom.
Good. I agree with all of that and that we are transparent, as you said earlier, about how we are using our funds with the community, including the teachers. So, I look forward to seeing that articulation and implementing the plan. I think the, I don't know if you have it on your slide there, but the second document in the packet was the, I guess, the Alameda County Professional Development Plan, which I thought looked reasonable, but there's some X's on the last page, and I guess I'd, hopefully, will, when are we going to fill those in? The X's being X percent of teachers will be, you know, exhibiting, you know, evidence-based discourse in their classroom, X percent of teachers have students engaging in depth of knowledge, three evidence-based discourse.
So, I think the goal is, we'll start to look at that in January. What our representatives, our partners want to do is actually assess where we are. So, when you, when they conduct the professional development, they can get an assessment of where teachers are and get a better gauge and idea of what that means in terms of, is that the right outcome, or is there another outcome that we should address or create? So, that's why the X's are there because... So that's why the X's are there because, and it's a draft, because that's what, that's where their thinking is, our thinking is currently. But what they want to do is work with the staff for at least the November, December dates and then come back to that outcome.
Okay.
Set goals for that?
Set goals, yes. Because right now, they don't have any information. So they don't know where our learning is, they don't know where our learning curve is. And as they work with us and receive feedback or, by simple, the questions that, as the staff we ask, or what we know, you can assess, you can do a lot of observations and assess where we are.
So I would just share that when I think about Common Core, someone recently shared with me a depth of knowledge chart. Which, which I pulled up and I'll circulate and maybe you can circulate it. But the, at the center of the, it's a circle. And the center is describe, explain, and interpret. And that's sort of where we're driving, to have students be able to exhibit all of those core skills. And then around the circle, you have, it's divided into four: Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4. Level 1 are recall skills. That's sort of the basic. Level 2 are the skill and concept, being able to exhibit a skill, understand a concept. That's sort of where our testing is now. The California Standards Test, it's focused on those first two levels, seeing recalling knowledge, showing that you can do this skill or that skill. The Common Core is trying to move us to Level 3, which is strategic thinking, being able to exhibit strategic thinking, develop a logical argument, use concepts to solve non-routine problems. And ultimately, Level 4, kind of the highest order of thinking, which are extended thinking, design, critique, analyze, create, prove. And so I think, I think I can circulate, but that's, that's how I think about the Common Core, is that we're trying to move beyond just where we have been focusing on these first kind of two levels into more complex.
So, so what I would say is the depth of knowledge is a modified version of a combination of rigor and Bloom Taxonomy, which is the higher-order thinking skills. So that's one component, that's in terms of where we want students in terms of, yes, how they think. And I think the, what they have stated is that it's not necessary that you're trying to always get them to 3 and 4, but it's critical to identify that. And so when, as a teacher, whether you're teaching it or whether a child is understanding or learning it, you should always understand when you're at Level 1 or DOK 2, DOK 3, or DOK 4. So what has, what hasn't happened, not only has the information been at a lower level, but in terms of teaching and instructionally, it has been at a lower level. So it, there's a focus on all four levels, so you can actually be, so you can actually determine when you, when, at a performance-based assessment, you can determine when you need to just recall or be at a Level 1. You can determine or understand when you need to be at Level 4. So it encompasses all of them, but it creates a higher awareness of what that teaching and learning is, so we can be cognizant of it and children can be cognizant of it, of it, in terms of when they read information. It's like a question, they should know, they should know what a question looks like at a Level 1 or a Level 4 question, et cetera. But we can come back and share that with you, if you want more information.
I'm glad I'm on.
I mean, it's going to take us a few actual, actual PDs to unpack that for us as well.
For sure. Questions?
Okay, yeah. So what I think I've heard you say thus far is that we have received funding for Common Core.
That is correct.
But we have not spent it.
No.
And we won't spend it until we have a plan.
Exactly. So at least, yeah, we want to present a plan, even if it's a draft. I know we can spend the money before it actually has to be approved, but before we spend the money, I would definitely prefer that it's understood and now, and it's public.
Do you know the dollar amount we've received so far thus far?
I would, I don't want to, I would have, I think I know, but I would guess.
Give me a ballpark.
But I think, I think we have 140,000.
Okay.
But I'm not, but I'm not sure.
That's fine, okay. Okay. And then the other question that I have. Now, this, the, this new standard has been vetted since '09, they implemented it in 2010, okay, to start.
They adopted, California did, yes.
And then started in, what, 2015? So how have we prepared our students thus far for the K through 8 domains that they're, you know, they're giving us? Or that's in the model?
So what I, what I will state is, there's two, there's a parallel track.
Elementary and high.
So there's a parallel track. One, staff is understanding what that is and unpacking that, and so they're able to express and articulate that to students and teach that to students. However, because we have been part of the Silicon Valley Math Initiative for years, the work and the, on the assessments, they're actually using the assessments that the students have used kindergarten through sixth, I mean, 2nd through 6th grade, and then recently 7th, 8th, and at the high school. So the MARS exams are actually performance-based assessments, which address a lot of those domains. And they also address the way the assessments will look in mathematics. So we have an advantage because we have, we have had several teachers who have attended the summer institutes, we've had a couple who actually teach at the institutes, and so that, and that has been a focus over the past several years.
Okay. So, so if I'm understanding you right, you're saying that we are preparing our kids thus far. So, you know, based on all the professional development and the collaboration with the Silicon Valley Math Initiative, we have started, I was just, I'm just throwing out a number, maybe two years of preparation of our students for these Common Core domains.
I would say we definitely have a head start and where the, I won't say, well, I guess the shift will be is, I think teachers have actually, have done some of the work, but they don't know how to articulate it yet in terms of the language that's used for Common Core State Standards. So as, as we understand the language, then teachers have the aha moments like, yes, I have been actually utilizing that strategy, or I have been teaching that over the past two, three, four years.
So it seems like, as you said, we still need to strengthen our professional development with our teachers.
Oh, absolutely.
To get them, you know, on board. Okay, great, thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. One, with the new test regime, is there going to be a way to know, to compare this last year's results with this year and know if we've made progress academically?
There's an attempt, and so, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, and anyone can think, but I don't, I don't think there'll be a base. What I think, because they're not, what they'll do is they'll give us information in terms of, I can't remember which way. It'll either be growth total as a school or growth as individuals, but not both. So you won't be able to compare the two because, and I'm looking at Sharice because I'm not, I can't remember.
Can I understand you, we're just field testing the field test?
Right.
And there's going to be no doubting microphone.
So what, so do you?
Oh, you have to come up to the microphone.
Superintendent Lindell, can you kind of chime in on this?
Absolutely. There, there, right now, and there was just an article in the paper about this, so Trustee Simon is spot on point in asking this question, there's a huge controversy right now about this very issue because there are, there, it's our understanding, or at least it's my understanding, that we will not receive any assessment data. And is that, I mean, are you hearing that as well?
Yeah.
And this was in the paper about, just about a week ago, actually.
At the Region 4 meeting that I've attended, so last we heard is there is no, there's going to be no data for school performance. It's literally just helping smarter balance, CalMAP get, for field.
Calibrate their test.
Yes.
Right.
So they just need the state to do their field tests or their tests, their problems. And so, so anyways, that's basically the purpose. There's not going to be an AYP or, no scores are going to be given to us. And so what they haven't decided yet is what that's going to look like for funding and so forth, and that hasn't been decided yet.
And this is, this is going to be for about two years. So that's why this is such a, such a big issue right now. We have, there are smarter balance assessment, which is the testing entity that's going to be administering the test. As they field test these items, they've got, they're doing field test of 3 million students in, in California. Well, I mean, what's that, San Diego or LA or, you know, something like that? And they're only doing it in certain grades and in certain subject areas. So it becomes a huge challenge for school districts. And we are, we are, we just had this conversation, actually, what, how are we going to monitor and assess our students during this next two years? And how are we going to know that there is, are showing progress? And so we're looking at our benchmark assessments that are being written specifically around Common Core, and we're looking at other pieces of data, particularly those related to course sequences, maybe at the high school, our A to G completion, some of the things, indicators that are on our dashboard. But it's a huge, huge question, and how we're going to compare ourselves in two or three years and the students. It also is an equity issue, quite frankly, that, that needs to be addressed and thought about as well. At the state level, Trustee Affeld? Yeah, and I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're, you're quite on top of this as well in terms of the conversation. You may know, know more about it as well. But that's the most recent information.
Because it changes, it changes frequently.
And it changes frequently.
And prior to that, the conversation was.
Great question.
And that's what I couldn't remember. They wanted to give individual scores but not school scores, but they may not even be ready. And so what Dr. Lindell stated, there are only a certain amount of questions that they, that smarter balance is only prepared to test a certain amount of students. So they're not even prepared necessarily, they weren't prepared for all the students in California, which is why they, you can only choose an English Language Arts or a math test.
Exactly.
So the ideal plan of the states is that this year will be the pilot testing year. We won't see data. We might be able to get data, but it will be kind of meaningless.
Correct.
We won't, you know, is it good data or bad data? But we can, we might be able to see some school-level data, but certainly not the individual parent level.
And you're only going to see that data in, let's just say it's a 4th grade, 4th grade student. That student may only take the math. That student may only take English Language Arts.
Unless we voluntarily want to pay to have them also pilot tested in the other sub. The ideal is that next year will be the baseline year, assuming that the pilot works out, that, so it could be two years, they're not, you know, it could be three, I mean, if they really run into problems.
That's correct.
We don't know. But the, the plan is that one-year pilot testing, then we'll start the new system the following year, and that will be the baseline data against which to compare subsequent years for growth.
Okay, so, so this comes to my point. So for the last 10 years, we've known how we were doing because we had these tests. And now we, now we're going into a limbo period for two, and if passed as prologue, it will be three because it takes a while to launch these things and get them calibrated right. So we've got two or three years where we don't really have a way to have an assessment. So I, I think what I'm looking for is for staff to come back to the board with how we are going to assess annual yearly progress internally, so that we have some way and do it. And I think we need to also know how we're going to represent ourselves to the public because anybody who goes onto all the websites to make school decisions, all they're going to see is the 2012, 13 test scores, which are sort of frozen in time. So there has to be some other way to say who we are in the world other than our 12, 13 test scores.
And I think all school districts in the state of California are asking the same question, so this is, this is the absolute right question. We're asking it of ourselves, all of our, our teachers, our curriculum folks, everybody is asking this, at the county level, at the state level. And, and this is where some of our, our benchmark assessment work will come in, and also where our dashboard of indicators will come in in terms of how we actually communicate and publicly report out our progress on our students.
So my recommendation, or at least suggestion, which you can toss around on that front, would be to look to see what common local tests did we, what local test did we give over the last few years, our own internal benchmarks, our curriculum-based test, whatever it is? How are we, are students performing on those local tests when we were in A13 or A15? And then be able to say, okay, well, this is how we're performing now on these local tests, and we've improved or we've gone down or whatever. But it's sort of holding parallel what we were doing locally.
So this is, this is what Ms. Allen was talking about earlier with our MARS, and we have our MARS test, TAF, and our DIBELS.
Exactly.
There are some standardized tests that are norm reference that we're, that we are using.
Yeah.
And that we can retro, go back and take a look at and then actually calculate and look at our data moving forward too.
To give some comparability snapshots.
So we just have to determine what all of those, what those indicators are going to be and how we're going to track and monitor that for the, over the next few years.
Sounds like you're on the right track.
I was just going to reiterate what you said, that I was just at a Title III Accountability Meeting, and that's what CDE recommended, that we use that DIBELS data that we already have, that's only K6, but we have been implementing that for the past year.
Right.
And you've got CELP data, which you're going to continue giving for English.
Except that test is going to change too.
So, so what I'm suggesting is that if staff could come back and say, we have a dashboard of indicators we put in, it's heavily reliant on test scores in some areas, we need to figure out how to modify it for the next, next few years so that we know what we're measuring. But I also wanted to advocate that we have an opportunity here because we're not the only ones being frozen for three years in time. We have an opportunity to go out and redefine who we are, and we've worked very hard to reshape who we are over a number of years with Roy's help and, you know, everybody, Ms. Allen's, or everybody here. We've looked at how do we be a school based on equity, based on opportunity? How do we go beyond just our test scores? I think it's an opportunity to, to really trumpet our music program, our, our arts program, and to put that out front. Because for years, people have been blinded by these silly scores, which quite frankly, in the experience of my kids, they're meaningless, you know? Whether or not we're 700 or 800, it's silly. My kids and Bria and the other kids in our school, they're getting a great education whether our school score is 6, 7, or 800. And we need to find a way to say that. And if it means making some investments, I do think, we heard earlier about the music program, I do think it makes sense to bring music back to Annie Yates. But whatever, whatever our package of what makes us unique, now is the time.
Well, and we're ahead of, we're ahead of the game on that too, with our dashboard of indicator, indicators. Our dashboard only shows one section of standardized test scores. There are multiple indicators on that, on that dashboard that tie back to our, our A to G completion and our high school graduation requirement. And, and we just began, as you remember, at our retreat in August, talking about adding K8 indicators as well. So, and that's all work that we're doing that's ongoing this year and all part of this, this much bigger conversation around assessments.
And I think, in particular, in the next six months to a year, we have a particularly important window because the parcel tax has really allowed us to pay for things that we could not pay for otherwise, our library program, our wellness program, our music program. And to the extent that, that we can use, really communicate to the community what we are so that, that this test scores don't blind the community to, to the sort of prejudices of testing.
Yeah, I think, I think the goal and the opportunity that you've just stated is we can focus on how students perform. And so there's a difference between how student, student performance and student achievement. Test focus on student achievement is the end-all, be-all versus, and it doesn't celebrate the diversity of our children, it doesn't celebrate the growth of our children, and it doesn't celebrate what we do as a community. So as we move into community schools and we think about wraparound services for our children, is what you identify as student performance, not necessarily student achievement. Student achievement is important, but student performance is what motivates children, and that's what you celebrate. So I think we do have an opportunity, and I think as a cabinet, as a staff, as a school community, we're, we're thinking about what are those ways that we can definitely make public, again, make learning visible, make what we do visible, and how students are performing and how they grow in terms of wraparound services, which actually leads right into, you know, our community. right into, you know, our community schools model.
Exactly.
Other board comments?
Uh, just-
Do you have any comments? I know you, yeah. Sure. Thank you. Other board comments?
Uh, will we be ready this year technology-wise to do the pilot test online with our laptop card purchasers?
Yes. Yes.
We've already ordered laptops, I mean laptop cards.
And that, we're on track to, to be ready.
Yes, and so there's like an eight-week window or something like that in terms of being able to administer the test.
The, just one follow-up question. So does the technology implication here mean we're going to be moving away from having computer labs and towards having more computers in the classroom?
That's the intent. So we'll have both and particularly, I mean, in, in terms of, you all have seen the blueprint in terms of ECL, you know exactly how many labs we'll have. So in order to give students access, we, we must implement laptop carts or iPads in our classrooms.
No, that's brilliant.
Or more computers in the class.
So I guess the, the question is, as, as we go forward with the ECL work, if the reality is education in California is moving away from computer labs and towards more computers in the classroom, if there are any, you know, at this point, it would have to be minor adjustments, but rethinking of how we're going to use that space, I'd rather we rethink it in the next year or two, ideally in the next year, so that we still have time to make no-cost adjustments in the plan.
A lot of that's included in the classroom signs, yeah.
And we have, we have, especially with the, in terms of, of the, so you actually see it in the ed specs.
Right.
So it talks about in terms of how many devices each child should be able to utilize at one setting and what that network should look like. So it's, so it's actually addressing that specs.
To clarify, Josh, do you mean to rethink the space for the computer lab specifically? I, I still think that we should have a computer lab because there are many kids in this district and in this country who don't have a computer at home. And so for after-school purposes, they need a computer lab or somewhere that they can go and do their homework at Go.
Right.
And if they're in high school, Go, apply for a job, or there, there's a lot that our students won't be able to access at home. So having a computer lab for that purpose alone is worth it.
Yeah, but we, it might be the computer lab is best co-located in the library where I think we already have one.
There is one.
And to the extent that we have computer labs on the upper floors, we just need to think about what the actual demand is going to be as we have the shift and where they should be to get at. The kind of access you're talking about might actually be more through the library and through the rec center than, I, I just raise it as a question.
Yeah, there's multiple.
So I think, yeah, the focus is more on access versus what the structure looks like. So again, in the education specs, the main piece is that, I mean, part is if a child is in a classroom, will they be able to open up an iPad or a phone or use three devices at one time? Because then it indicates how much wireless you have. So when we want students, so the campus should be open for anyone to use them because they may not have access at home, but we know that we should have access at the school throughout the entire campus, whether that be labs in the classroom or portable outside.
And over time, over time, the state actually is recommending one-on-one computing for all students anyway.
Well, and that brings me to my next question.
So I mean, there's a, that's a, that's a going to be, would have to be phased in over a, over a period of time.
Well, and the original idea for the bond was that part of the bond funds were paid for this technology. And I know we can't make those decisions until, until the bids come in and we know that we have the money to, to pay for everything. But I do want to just bookmark that we passed the bond to pay for technology. And I want to thank the district for the forward-thinking effort to introduce the iPads to, to start this. I do want to encourage us to think about, you know, should we be putting more of the iPads into the hands of teachers to look at how to begin acknowledging this technology? And I heard you mention laptops. My question is, are we going to be doing, does it make sense to be doing this on laptops or are we moving towards tablets for?
In the case of, of our smarter balance assessments, laptops. Because the tablets don't, tablets sometimes can't, they can't handle the, the amount of information that students need to use. And for the most part, laptops, unless the battery is dead, they act more like a computer than a tablet that may not be able to accommodate all the functions.
Okay, thank you.
There's typing keyboard issues too, right?
Right.
Kind of need a keyboard.
I like word is word.
Although for children, the keyboard, the keyboard is more of a problem for us than it is for them. So if you've ever watched them text, the thumbs work really fast.
Are there any additional questions for Ms. Allen? Just before you go, and I know this was sheer informational, I just want to go out to the members of the public if there's any comments on this particular item. And I know that there will be follow-up-
There will be.
-as you bring forward the plan.
And there's also, we have to have parent forms as well to inform them what Common Core, what those shifts mean, because what their children will be learning will look completely different from what they learned or how they learned in school.
You know, the only thing, since you just said that, Ms. Allen, the only thing that I would like to see would be a, a schedule of those meetings, you know, once you get them together-
Uh huh.
-to the board, just so we know when they'll be held, so maybe we want to attend or, you know, open up to the public.
Well, please, please, I just was going to throw out the question of will we have a web, do we have a webpage that says Common Core? You know, I'm a, I'm a slight technology person, it's very slight, not much.
And I just wanted to say that on the CDE website, you can, it's available to go ahead and go try the practice tests. So you can at least see what we're, it's approaching for us as, as teachers and then what our students are going to be asked to do. So it works on the iPad. It's a little frustrating because I've gone through it, but you can choose grade level, you can choose math, you can choose language arts. It's a sample so that you can, you can at least see.
And appreciate why I'm not at school anymore, so, okay. But any-
So I think what we'll place on the website are actually links where the work has been done, you know, to, so parents can engage in some of the information, like community members and our, our teachers. So what, so we all attend, well, Sharice has attended what she, what you call core learning, which is a part of the curriculum council, and then Kim attends with myself, the EL forums. And so at all of those forums or the councils or core learning, they offer a variety of learning sites with regards to the Common Core. And actually, the partners that we're working with, ACOE, they've actually come up with, they've done a lot of the heavy lifting for us. So it'll be easy for us to say, go to this link, and, and they've kind of actually laid it out where it's user-friendly.
Even better, even better. No, that's great. Any, that's it for the board this evening? Thank you so much for addressing that topic, which is hot and sounds like it's still forming. We'll now move on to H local, H6 Local Control Accountability Report, LCAP.
Yes, so this item here, we have Mark Bonet, our CBO, who's going to lead this discussion related to the development of our LCAP plan, review the timeline, and have a general discussion in addition to that. But we have, I also, Ms. Allen, we're going to engage in actually combining and integrating the LCAP plan with teaching and learning, obviously, which is what it's supposed to be and do. And the goal this time is to just really make sure that we're soliciting input, not just on, not on LCAP per se, but also on our BAC. So we're going to use our budget advisory process and combine all of those together this year, along with some of the other pieces of data that we need to gather from the community and around teaching and learning. And so we've got Mr. Bonet here, CBO, to give a brief overview of that information, and also Ms. Allen to answer any questions as well related to aligning the key areas. Mr. Bonet.
What we've done is integrate the budget calendar and integrated the LCAP calendar with that. So, and I'll go through the months. November, it's establishing a budget advisory committee and sending out notices to parents with regard to LCAP. December, we're going to meet with school site staff and go over what the LCAP is with our teachers and our school staff, similar, similarly to what we did with the school board at the study session. And then recruit parents during the month of December for the LCAP. And that sounds like some of that work has already been done. January, it's going to the governor's budget workshop, find out how much money we'll be getting, meeting with the parent advisory groups, holding community meetings. The state Board of Education has to adopt the regulations with regard to the use of the supplemental and concentration grants. So we expect that information by the end of January. In February, we'll meet with school site councils and DLAC for feedback and input. We'll start the enrollment projections, and some of that has already started. Staffing projections, the budget assumptions, we'll start hold, start holding community meetings. March, we'll get budget assumptions to the board, we'll start line item processes incorporating the information that we've gotten from our community meetings. April, we will update the committees, review the budgets with the trustees, and then in May revise our tentative budget, incorporate the governor's May revisions into that budget. And then hopefully by June, we have it all together, the LCAP plan and the budget plan, and present that to the board for adoption before June 30th. Our plan, our LCAP plan will then go to the county office of education for approval, as will our budget. So they'll both go to ACOE for, for review and approval. And the, the lateness of the LCAP plan goes to October 8th. Generally, the budget is approved or disapproved before that time. So there's not a linking of timelines with regard to the LCAP and the budget adoption process, even though they are linked and they have to be linked. I don't know why the state had incorporated that date and not coincided it with the budget approval process.
It's my understanding that the LCAP has to be approved before the budget can be. The LCAP has to be approved before the adopted budget. Is that-
I think they could be approved at the same meeting.
Well, the-
I don't, I don't believe that one has to be approved before the other. I haven't read that anywhere.
The adopted budget can't be approved without the LCAP being approved. You're right, they can be approved on the same day. But the LCAP has to be, you know, either the same day or the LCAP has to be approved before. The adopted budget cannot be approved before the LCAP.
That's news to me then.
That's my understanding. Am I correct in that?
So are you talking about by the district or by the county?
Um, by the district. I was going to-
So, so the district, it's basically, we adopt, we have to have a hearing on the LCAP-
Right.
-at an, at a date prior to the meeting where we adopt the LCAP.
Right.
When we adopt the LCAP, which must be by June 30th.
Right.
We, we are essentially adopting the budget at the same time.
Right, right.
The county subsequently reviews and approves our LCAP and our budget, which again is going to be happening at the same time.
Right, okay, all right.
Was it the county has the October 8th, the LCAP part is clear?
I guess, yeah.
Maybe they have to work that out.
I mean, I, I think they'll-
Right. Okay. Um.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can, we can have an LCAP sooner so that we can get county approval sooner?
This is going to be a laborious process and it's relatively new, and all the regulations aren't out yet. So it's like feeling ourselves around in the dark.
Well, this is, well, this is, I mean, this is what I'm hearing, is that districts, because we know the guidelines of what the LCAP should be, districts should go ahead and start planning the LCAP. And I think once the regulations come out from the state board or whatever they do, then if there needs to be adjustments through districts, that can be done. But the advice that I'm hearing from school services is that, you know, districts need to start this project and, and have them prepared for the adopted budget for 14, 15, which is in June.
Which is what we're doing, so no problem there.
You know, right.
This is the question of whether or not the county in their, you know, that language where they have to adopt it. What if they don't turn, you know, turn around to us until September?
We've done our- That's, that's their deadline.
That's the only difference. It seems like we're tied to the same guideline, so there's, we're, we're parallel track with the budget approval process from the board, so we're in the same place.
Yeah, Ms. Allen and I have already discussed identifying currently how we're spending monies in those eight areas and currently how we're addressing some of those areas of need. So we are starting that process already, which will facilitate the 14, 15 budget adoption process.
So I appreciate this. This is, I think lays out a good basic framework. I think there, that there's some more details that need to be folded into this, so.
Absolutely. And we do understand that. We just haven't pinned down certain dates to get some of this work done.
Yeah, so let me give you some dates and let me give you some additional ideas on, on what I'd like to see in here. The state board is, is meeting in January where they will be adopting the regs. It's going to be probably mid, we know what the board meeting data, you know, it's like the 10th and the 11th, or it's set in stone already. That's, that's when we're going to know what the regs look like, not, even though the statute says the 31st, we're actually going to know. And it's, and even though the statute says they have till March 31st to adopt the template, the board is attempting to adopt the template at the same time in the January meeting. So their current template version is, is pretty weak and they've got a lot of work to do if they want to meet that deadline. But that is their announced plan to try to actually in January do both, the expenditure regulations and the template. The, I think the, um, it, it, the piece missing from this, I'd say like the most substantive piece, is that the statute also requires us to set, identify what our school-level goals are in the eight state priority areas. What are our school-level specific actions to meet those goals? And what are our school-level expenditures to deliver those specific actions? So that is both to be happening at the district level, goals and specific actions and expenditures all tied up, and at the school level. So I think there needs to be some processes built in to explain that in our, in our LCAP.
Yeah, as we go back and look at how we're meeting those eight areas, we'll, we'll do that by school level. We have to.
We, it probably will be easier for us to do that because we have, you know, one elementary K8 and one high school, so that, that is probably true. I just want us to be paying attention to make sure we're, we are making that distinction. We're not, we don't just have like a, we have a district goal to, you know, do X, and we're spending, this is what we're going to do to do X, and you're not clear what are we doing at the high school, what are we doing at the NE8s? Where are we spending the money to do that, which school? So I think we, we need to make sure we're breaking that out.
Some of our problem may come along the lines of, say, a parent liaison that works for the districts and works for both schools-
Uh huh.
-and how we divide that time up between both schools.
But you, you, you're able to do that.
I understand, yeah.
You're able to say, well, prorata, they're, you know, rough- You're able to say, well, prorata, they're, you know, roughly going to be 60, 40, or whatever it might be, yeah. Ms. Allen, you wanted to respond to that specific?
So I just wanted to, I know you all had, Mr. Bonet came up and he talked about the eight areas, but I also wanted to talk a little bit more about the eight areas in terms of the goals. And I think in terms of what we're thinking in, when we look at the LCAP, so while there's specific language that we must adhere to, but I think overall, we still have to continue to think about what that looks like when moving to ECCL. So if we're thinking about K-12, one of the requirements is that not only do we have to set the goals, but you have to actually be very, it's in the details is where you will actually see what will happen at each school. So when you set, so even if we set a district goal, the district goal would, because you can set a goal, but it will look different at the high school than in the elementary school. However, as we think about our marketing plan or recruitment, what we've also noticed is that we have to start thinking K-12. And so, so it's a both and, so it's both, what is the district goal, what does it look like school site, but also how does it actually, how does it look as a continuum, and how do they both align? So it's, so when we want to maintain our students from one school to the next, then we're thinking about it as, what does it look like K-12? Because that's what we have to start advertising and promoting to our parents. And so I just want us to be mindful of that as well, in addition to what you stated.
Yeah, that's, so, as long as we're saying, okay, these are the specific actions we're taking to meet those goals.
Yeah, so...
And they're going to look different, K-3 than...
And it may look different K-3 versus, you know, or K-5 versus 68. So, so the more specific we are, I think, the more that we'll be able to identify if we really can implement that, and do we have the funding to do so? So therefore, the package becomes comprehensive versus what we often receive, our piecemeal information of what one person may want, or what one person thinks, and always be mindful, when a person comes to the microphone and they think about what their specific state, they represent a stakeholder group. And whether it's a parent, or whether it's a teacher, whether it's a student, they represent a stakeholder group. And hopefully, in our attempts, we begin to help people understand what does it look like K-12? Because while I'm a stakeholder group right now for my third grader, my third grader will eventually be an 11th grader. And so if I'm not thinking that far ahead, then we're being short sighted, and we're using funding for a one-time shot deal versus how does it look like when we sustain this program, or we sustain this service for our students? So it's also both and, so what, so there's, you know, as you all know, there's eight areas that we have to address, which is, one is student achievement, and I think they still need to change the language, because it addresses CSTs while there's another category that talks about implementing Common Core standards. But student achievement is one, and then one part that is really in particular, particularly, what are we doing to, you know, get students college and career ready? And so that's K-12, and again, particularly what we're doing with K-912, and what those partnerships with Berkeley City College look like, our parrot system. So this gives us an opportunity to actually address a different type of model for our children based on that we're a tiny school district, based on that we have limited staff. But it gives us more of an opportunity to think broadly and not necessarily very narrow. Second area is student engagement. So currently, the language talks about student engagement in terms of school attendance, dropout, graduation rates. The fortunate part of being in a tiny district is we probably can, we can pull reports that will identify two or three students, so we can identify our students versus not a mass of students. So it also gives us an opportunity to redefine what student engagement is. And so some of our attempts in terms of having student voice, where, you know, students are representatives, where we have the leadership class, where we have student-led activities versus the adult activities, such as, you know, in terms of tearing down our school, or student-led activities in terms of what the LCAP will be, a lot of those forms will actually be student-led. So how do we actually have students engaged community-wise and also engaged in the classroom? So it gives us more opportunity to talk about student engagement versus just if they're absent, or if they're, you know, dropouts. Because we have, the few that we do have, we usually have a plan for them, but how do we be more proactive versus always being reactive in student engagement? The third area is other student outcomes, which will address a lot of the outcomes that are on the scorecard. So it gives us an opportunity to address performance and tell the story, such as remember Simon was talking about earlier, but how do we actually, what indicators do we want to use to tell the story? So as we have conversations with our constituents and stakeholders, it's imperative that we help them shift their thinking in terms of talking about a story and creating that story versus the mentality of, there's a pot of money, and I'm here to just get what I need from my constituent group. But how do we actually start to collectively think, what do we need for everyone, and what gives us the most leverage so everyone can actually, so our students can have or reach equitable outcomes? The next category is student climate. Student climate addresses suspension and expulsion rates, but our focus will be on other local measures. So in terms of, we have, we are fortunate to have a wellness department, and we have individuals who go above and beyond and work over 100% to actually make sure that that department works and students receive wraparound services. So in this, how do we define school climate? What is our story about school climate? So it's not a deficit model in terms of suspensions and expulsion, but when a child comes into this district, what can we guarantee parents that, what kind of climate will your child experience, and what will you experience as a family? So several of these areas can provide us an opportunity to think about the vision that you all placed, or in terms of ECCL versus just the typical language that the state has provided for us. Fifth area, parent involvement, so you know, that's been a conversation that we've talked about. Hopefully, we'll adopt, you know, a framework, but it also addresses, how do we seek parent input, which I think is very important for parents to know, in terms of how do we actually address, how do we recruit, now, I don't want to say recruit parents, but how do we involve parents and welcome parents in terms of the conversations that we have? And also, what are, what's our promotion of parent involvement, which I will, I always go back to the framework. When we have a framework and we can identify where parents can become involved, they have a menu of options versus just the picture that they have in their head of what they think it should look like, or the bad experiences that they've had as a child, you know, in terms of a school system. So we want, again, to make sure that parents are welcome in our schools. The next area are basic services. So it addresses teacher misassignments, it addresses standard-aligned instructional materials and facilities in good repair. So some of the information that we address with R. Williams, you know, law, do we have adequate facilities? Do we have, you know, textbooks for all students? But it also, again, creates an opportunity of, how do we support our staff, and how do we support our teachers? You know, we don't have healthy teachers, then we don't have healthy students. So it gives another opportunity or bucket versus, all the focus is always, who's misassigned? Who doesn't have the right credential? Who doesn't have this? Versus, what are we doing to make sure our teachers want to stay in this district and go above and beyond 100% versus, they come to work at 8:00 and they leave at 3:00, they stayed in their contract? And how do we celebrate what they do? How do we support what they do, and how do we encourage their innovation in terms of being able to take risks? And I feel like they're being evaluated all the time. So again, this, the category gives us an opportunity to talk about it proactively versus the language that the state gives us. The next one is the implementation of Common Core state standards, so we talked a little bit about that, and it also includes EL. So as Ms. Miller stated, we, our goal is to talk about our students inclusively, include our special ed students, while we need to identify the equitable outcome, so students learn in different manners, they learn differently, but what are we implementing so they can access the curriculum? And that should be a conversation that we talk about all of our learners. Otherwise, again, sometimes you get into your pigeonhole in terms of, here's a pot of money, and we're all grabbing for the same pot of money, and we're only representing a certain group versus how do we represent all of our children? And then the last area are the course access. So just making sure the students have access to courses that are meaningful, A through G, or courses that will prepare them college, you know, for college and career. So we have to have specific actions, we have to use the LCAP template, as you all know, that won't be available until March. And then we must solicit input from our stakeholders in developing a plan. And so just briefly to talk about one of the areas, the town hall meetings, so we'll work with Youth Together, and you all, so we have a young lady by the name of Celeste who helps run our leadership programs with Ms. Collins in terms of ASB, and the goal is to actually have them lead some of the meetings and have focus groups, so we actually can have affinity groups. So there, you do have stakeholder groups that talk about specifically in terms of what it means for students in terms of language, in terms of students of race, in terms of student social economics. So you have focus groups, but then you also have the conversation of, when we get together, what is that, if we see all, this is what students need, then what gives us the most leverage so that all of our students can be successful in college reading? And then, I think that's primarily mostly in, and so I know that this is a draft, and what we want to bring back is a final draft and actually a flow chart in terms of what those specific conversations will look like. So hopefully, that wasn't too much.
Yeah, that's great, that was great. So, a reminder too, that the, I requested in the Governor's Office was willing to listen to me that there's also the option of adding local priorities in addition to the eight states. So we're not limited to only the eight they gave us. We can, if we think music is a, and arts is a high priority, or STEM, or some other articulation, we are free to build that into our LCAP. On the community meetings in particular, I'm glad you brought that up, because the plan proposes, in a draft sense, a community meeting somewhere between January 27th and the 31st, and then another community meeting in February, the end of February, 24 to 28. Again, I guess I have a number of questions around that. Are we, it seems that we need both school-level community meetings and district community meetings, and that maybe we should start with the school and later on move to a district level. But particularly if we are hewing to the notion that we're going to have school-level goals, actions, and expenditures, then we ought to be, you know, talking to the E-LAC and the SSCs and the PTOs and the staff at that school site, and building up what our LCAP is by starting with a, some school-level community meeting.
So hopefully, I'm not sure, but it hopefully was articulated when we created the timeline. So the town hall meetings are a little different when we receive feedback from the established groups. So not only would we receive feedback from the E-LAC, the school site councils, the PTOs, that's one set. The town hall meetings are specifically for entire groups, and then they'll sit in their specific groups. So if they represent a group that is the elementary, or they represent a specific, so they represent specific stakeholder groups. In terms of having, and so you want to make sure that you have stakeholders from all of your categories.
So you're proposing a universal town hall meeting in which people will talk, in some part of the room will be divided, and the NEAs folks go there, and the ESs go there?
Or stakeholders. So you may have, because even at NEAs, you have stakeholders, you have specific groups. So the intent of the town hall meetings, which Youth Together have conducted in Burke, they conducted San Francisco Unified and West Contra Costa Unified, the intent for those particular meetings are to actually have focus groups. And so if your focus groups represent parents at NEAs, or they represent teachers at NEAs, then those groups will be there, and then everyone can see their information to get, I mean, altogether, K-12, or as a community. The specific staff meetings or E-LAC meetings, we will attend those as well, but we will also go to the established meetings or structured meetings where our stakeholders already have established ones. So staff meetings, E-LAC, school site council, PTOs. So the goal is to actually address as many people and give them more opportunities to engage, because they're all, they all won't come to necessarily a town hall meeting. Maybe that's the only one they can come to. They all aren't necessarily sitting, you know, all teachers won't be able to go to that, but they'll be able to participate at a staff meeting, because we know that they're all there on Thursdays or Wednesdays. So it's a variety of both and.
So I think you have my point, and I, you know, I think as long as we are paying attention to both the, as I've said several times tonight, the school level and the district level goals and actions, I think that that can work, what you're proposing. The other thing about the community town halls is, I mean, I did appreciate the budget timeline sensitivity that this, and interaction that the draft plan has. I think we need to think about that in terms of the town halls too, because we can meet in January, in February, based on the January budget, but then we have a May revise that can really change things, maybe in a negative direction, maybe in a positive direction. And it seems like there needs to be some, another town hall where we say, all right, now these are the real May revise numbers, now we know what we're most likely to get, how has that changed our tentative LCAP, and, you know, how does it, now we have that extra money for that music teacher, or whatever it is. We ought to, we ought to be able to, I think, build that into the process.
That's a part of the, that's a difficulty that districts have had for a really long time, yeah, absolutely. And it's conveying that information now just to a larger crowd. We've always conveyed that information to budget advisory committees, school sites, school boards. That audience just gets bigger as we do the same work. That's all it means.
But, well, I mean, I guess now that we have this new LCAP community engagement process, I think we need to have a formal LCAP community engagement meeting after the May revise to involve, because we're going to modify the LCAP.
You're absolutely right, right.
And that, along those lines, that this draft has us adopting on March 31st an LCAP, which seemed, adopt, SBE adopts template.
That's State Board.
Yeah.
So you're saying that's in January? You're saying that's now in January 11th?
Yes, I am saying that's probably going to be...
So it's not March?
Tentative budget to board a trustee, complete line item budget.
He said that the template may be adopted at the same time as the regs from January, so that may change.
Okay, so maybe...
We may get that information at the Governor's Budget Workshop.
Yeah, and the sooner we get that, the better we're able to implement the plan.
So do we have a, I guess that there needs to be a little more tightness between what the statute requires in terms of a, an LCAP kind of proposed, a hearing on the LCAP, and then final adoption? So I just want to see those dates built in. And, you know, what is, what is the date in June or late May where we are saying, okay, the May revise has come out, we've taken your input on that now, we know what our numbers are, now we're having our hearing well enough in advance of, I mean, it's basically, we only have two meetings in June, so it's got to be like the first June board meeting where we say, here's our LCAP. Because it can't be the same board meeting that we adopt the budget in the final LCAP. We have to be hearing the June, the meeting before that.
I do see in May, the end of May, that we have public notice of budget adoption, so is it, would it be envisioned that the LCAP would be similarly profiled at that meeting as well?
Well, the LCAP will have to have a public hearing, the first meeting in June, and then be adopted the second meeting in June. That's a really tight timeline to make changes. I view this as a plan and goals around those eight areas, as Anna Kretas stated. And the budget is just tweaked between May and June with regard to the ups or downs of the budget. I think the plan still stays in place, the dollars just may change.
We need, you know, even under that framework then, we need to have a public hearing on the plan at some point in advance of June, both to have the public hearing requirement, but also we're required to get feedback from, or, you know, if they want to give it, from the D-LAC, from the school site councils, from the parent advisory committee that we form, and the superintendent is required to respond in writing to any comments that are received from those entities. So there needs to be the timeframe built in to respond in writing, and maybe even to change our LCAP, to say, good point.
That was one of my questions.
So, okay, this is just a thought, and usually I don't do that at board meetings, because I like to think about it thoroughly. However, you know how, I think if we give updates in terms of what people are thinking, it gives you information in advance, so you're not waiting until the last minute for someone to come out of the wood, someone does car wheels inside the school board meeting or come out of the woodworks, and they bring a whole stakeholder group... the woodworks, and they, they bring a whole stakeholder group, and they make a plea at a public meeting, because then you're able to respond, you, not only do you anticipate what's coming up, you're able to start to assess, and you're able to actually think about it comprehensively. So, by the time June comes, you shouldn't have a conversation anymore about, well, maybe we should consider this, again, with Mr. Miller, I mean, Mr. Miller, what Mr. Monet stated, was that you should only adjust, it shouldn't be the plan that you're adjusting, it's just the dollar amounts.
And, and you hit the nail on the head, because that was going to be my, you know, question, suggestion, that prior to the hearing of LCAP, that we have a study session with the board to allow us to see what the community input, you know, really is or really was. But with you saying the updates, if we can get either updates after each community meeting, or, you know, each meeting, or get a study session after all the community meetings have been, you know, had, and then we can just look at, you know, all the final comments before we have the hearing, for me, that would be well. But to piggyback on member Adfeld regarding the timeline, I did not see where the superintendent in this timeline would respond to any of those concerns of those stakeholders. And if that's a part of the, the regulation, or the, or, you know, the law, then we need to put that in this timeline as well, because we will have feedback from those stakeholder groups regarding the LCAP, I'm sure. We just had one today, where we just had a request today.
I think it's not in there, because as we go through this process, we'll be making changes along the way. This isn't a hard and fast
Right.
Plan that, that
Right.
That's being drafted and pushed along.
I'm with you.
This thing is, is fluid, just like the budget's fluid, and we follow from, before January, we have a good idea what the governor's going to present in January. Then before the May revise, we have a good idea what is going to be coming out in the May revise. Maybe not exactly, but we have a good understanding of what's coming out in May, and then what the, the state will adopt in June. So, we have a pretty good idea of what those numbers will be, and
I'm not
It's a, it's a fluid process, as will the LCAP plan be a fluid process.
Well, I think the budget's a little bit more fluid than the plan, because the plan has to really be vented out through the community process, and, you know, and they, there may have to be some, what's the word I'm looking for from the superintendent, some response back from the superintendent. So, that, that's not as fluid as the numbers that you're talking about, and I'm with you there. You know, my concern is not so much with the numbers, but it is more concerned with the plan, and making sure we have that plan, because then, like you said, I'm with you, Mr. Monet, the numbers can, can flow with the plan, but the numbers can't flow if we don't have a plan. And that's my concern, just from an, and knowledge and update point, knowing what that plan looks like as it goes on, you know, as it goes through the process, or as it's being developed.
Right. So, I think it's noted, I don't think, because I think there's two ways you can be strategic about it. So, and it would be up to Dr. Lindo in terms of how she wants to respond. So, you can have a response where you have one meeting, she has to respond to everything that comes up at the meeting, or you can respond as you go along. So, what I think we should do as a staff is to go back in terms of legally what we have to do, and is there, is it the what, or do they identify also the how? If they only identify the what, then we should be strategic in terms of how we respond. So, therefore, we're all clear that if she's going to respond, will it be from one meeting, and we state this is all public meeting, or is she responding every time someone comes up and makes a comment after the update? And so, really, that should be, if, if it's not specified in terms of how, then it gives us more discretion in terms of what that looks like.
So, we, we need to obviously, you know, look at the statute, but I believe that the, the structure does specify how, to the extent that it's anticipating the proposed LCAP that the board is planning, proposing to adopt, is presented at a public hearing that is not where it is adopted, but is in advance of that. And that, at that, in response to that version of the LCAP, written comments, if received, by certain entities, including the parent advisory committee and the D-LAC, must be responded to in writing
That's correct.
By the superintendent.
And it's not, it's not, it's a great, a great point to note, to ensure that we, we note it on the timeline that we publicly give to the community to let them know that there, there, there will be a response, a written response.
So, and one question, does it state that you have to have one public meeting, or how many public meetings can you have? You have to, is the minimum one, correct? So, you can have as many public meetings, I mean, I'm just asking you all.
The, the minimum of a public
Of a public hearing.
Hearing on the LCAP, but then there are other language and other pieces saying, the other pieces not so prescriptively, but you need to have engagement and engage stakeholders, parental involvement, it's a priority, blah, blah, blah.
Again, so I think definitely, we definitely know what the what is, I think there's still, there may be, may, may be some opportunity to, to describe and to address the how.
Right. And I would just add that I think, I think there is an opportunity to not just make it formulaic of, okay, here's our public hearing, and here's our written, but combine that with the May revise timing to then see how that affects things, and then at that point, then we have, right, you know, as soon as we can after the May revise, have this public hearing and do the kind of written, but, you know, one more round of here's the public opportunity to, to have feedback, based on what we know our final numbers are. And I, and I would say, I, I'm not so sure that, I wouldn't say ahead of time the plan won't change with the May revise, because I, I could anticipate that what might come out of this engagement process is, you know, we don't have enough money to do that, but hey, if we got a little bit more on a May revise, that would be the next thing we'd want to do. And then boom, the May revise, which it looks like it will this year, we may actually, you know, have, have, get more income than we're, you know, otherwise expecting, so.
Question for you, I just had two, two comments, questions. I think what worked really, it was very helpful that Mark you presented to the board last year were the, the priorities that were listed from that, that BAC committee. I think that was really valuable. So, I'm just envisioning that it would be a similar list that may come, or maybe it's the same list that comes from the LCAP, the folks that are meeting in that. So, we'll know what the priorities are as we go along, which I think is the point.
My expectation is that there'll be different priorities from these different constituent groups. So, the parents may have a different list as opposed to the BAC, as opposed to the D-LAC, as opposed to the school site council. So, I think there'll be several lists that
It's going to be fun.
That we'll have to choose from.
And then, I guess my other point is, it seems as if the districts, and I'll say the board, you know, we have the annual process of divining what the goals will be of the district for the pre, you know, for the next year. We normally do that in a retreat format in the summertime. So, does that accelerate, I mean, essentially accelerate our goal setting, right, for the prior year?
It will, it will have to.
And so, I mean, I think that, how do we inform, I mean, it's not, I don't even think it's really January, I mean, I think it's too early. It seems that we're kind of role reversed, not role reversed, but I think in terms of process reversed, that the constituencies, different, the different groups are going to be meeting and determining what their interests are, and the board is going to have to at some point synthesize or something, so.
May I suggest that, that maybe the January, the January retreat is the time when we sort of set the framework for what we're about to go into with the various community meetings? Because quite frankly, there are a thousand ways to do school. Ms. Allen has pointed this out on numerous occasions. We can go in an infinite number of directions, and it's our role as the board to say, this is the direction we're going in, so that as we get the input, we can then use that as the organizing principle for the input. In the past, over the past 10 years, we've said our direction is we are a science and arts school, that we're going to frame things in the science and the arts, and a college going school, and that's been consistent, you know, throughout. And I think it's important that, that, that local control doesn't mean free for all, it means how do we set a direction and weave all this together, so that it, it doesn't become the place where we divide as a community into factions, the arts kids and the, and the sports kids, and, and, you know, instead, we set the direction in January, and then I would, I would encourage us to even consider declaring a number of these meetings as board work sessions, so we can be there as well, and we can, we as a board can speak with one voice, that the point of these discussions is, how do we make this an and discussion, and not, you know, violins versus football? So, we have to find a way to set, to, to this, yeah, that's, that's my two cents.
Any other board comments on this particular one?
Well, I, I would just say, yeah, ultimately, it is the, the board that's going to decide, we could reject all the community input and say, we're going off in another direction, but I, you know, I, obviously, yeah, I mean, I think we have, we have set some directions, I think we certainly want to communicate that, and I'm curious to see what the community input is, as you said, like we saw in the BAC, and now we'll have a broader set of stakeholders. I think it's a great idea to, what, I was just assuming we could all go and participate, if we need some formal noticing of a study session.
We can, as officials, go.
If more than two of us want to go, so I think that we just call them study sessions, and then all five of us can go.
Whatever we need to do.
We did that, we, and we talked about that in the communications committee a while ago, about having community board forums, so it definitely fits into that.
But I don't, I'm not anticipating that they are in any way formal, or that we are sitting in front of a room or anything, that we're, that it's a community forum, and we're simply participating. The last point out is, as the, as the draft rightly notes, we have to appoint a parent advisory board. That is a new entity that we don't currently have, and so we need to get on that. We should have it in place by January before any of these meetings happen.
It states.
You've got the timeline here.
That's
No, states in December. Inform NEAT's, ESS staff, school site councils, D-LAC regarding LCAP budget process, ask teachers, and I could ask also at those particular meetings for parent nominations. So, I think when the teachers nominate certain parents, then we give them a private phone call, and we state you have been nominated, you know, to participate in our parent advisory. A lot of parents, they'll see the, although we'll put the information out, but many of them have indicated a conversation, a phone call where you can actually have a conversation, ask questions, has been beneficial, and not necessarily in a public forum, where they feel like that they're put on the spot to participate. So, that's, so there are other ways, but that's one way that I know, in terms of receiving feedback, that may actually be beneficial, is to have teachers nominate. And it doesn't, it doesn't exclude that the parents can't nominate themselves, or, or volunteer, as we said on information, but in terms of nominations, it's nice to, to call and say, you have been nominated, you know, to participate on this, this committee because of A, B, C, and D, and we would like to extend the invitation to you.
So, I was going to ask a question based on that timeline. Could we move that piece, the teachers nominating parents, up to November?
Well, the reason we don't have no, so, in, at this time in November, Mark intends to speak with the budget advisory committee first. So, so therefore, you have some staff who understand what this process looks like and give some initial feedback. Then in December, he will attend their staff meetings. And so, at the staff meetings is when, when he explains the information, or explains the process, is when we'll ask for parent nominations.
Because, is that staff meeting early in December? Because where I was kind of going with this, if we could do this in the first week of December, I mean, because teachers are going to be going on holidays, parents, you know, celebrating the holiday, the sooner we get to them in December, I think the better we'll be, you know, as far as getting some kind of response, whether it's yea or nay, versus waiting until.
Response from who? Teachers?
From the parents, on the nomination.
Yeah, so a lot of the, well, a lot of parents have cell phones, so you're actually going to contact them wherever they are, I mean.
I was just saying, they're earlier in December, the best.
Yeah, so the two dates, so the two dates, the, the latest that we can do NEAT's is the 19th. And the, so the first week in December, we can do ESS, and it's the 19th, because we've already scheduled Alameda County Office of Education to come on those Thursdays.
So, well, I mean, I guess I just had in mind a more, somewhat more formal process than a teacher nominating someone, and someone calling them up, saying, congratulations.
Well, it's not congratulations, it's just we want to welcome you, doesn't mean that you have to accept it, so.
But I, I, okay, I guess I envisioned nominees, names being put in front of this board, and this board appointing, much like we kind of did the task force with the schools committee, and that this board may have ideas, the superintendent may have it, you may have ideas of parents that should be, and we certainly should ask the teacher, and I think we should, in Wednesday packets, invite volunteers, too, and say, why do you think you should be on this, and maybe we will.
Yeah, so I stated, although I stated just teachers, but it's actually asking a variety of people. I, we could do a formal process in front of the board, I can only go by experience, and I also know how parents feel, how they'll accept in, on the spot, but they really don't want to do the work, and they say it afterwards. And I would want to, again, make sure that we welcome parents, and not feel like that we're forcing them to be on anything. So, I think it would be nice to have them be, to come to a board meeting, and we can definitely accept nominations from staff, all over, from the board members, but the personal phone call is what gets parents in the door.
I absolutely agree with you on that, that they, there should be some sussing out from potential candidates, that, do you know what this is? Do you know what the scope of work is here? Are you willing and interested in participating?
So, I think a formal process comes when you have a lot of people who want to participate. But if we have 10 who's dedicated, can we take those 10?
Well, that, if I can just make, I, I'd like some thought into, do we want 10? 10 may be too big, maybe we want 15, you know? We want a, we certainly want some English learner parents, we want ideally special ed parents, we want, you know.
So, the goal is to get a variety of stakeholders?
Right.
The question is, in terms of parent advisory, is, is it, when you state, we want to, are, so, the question will be in a flow chart, who works with the parent advisory group? So, if it's a parent advisory group that is intended to come to a board meeting, or is in a study session with the board members, then it makes sense. So, I think that is a further discussion that we have to talk about actually the process, because clearly, if we have a difference in what the process is, and to get parents, then we need to flesh that out, and just to make sure that we're on the same page.
So, it, as I, yeah, as I understand the parent advisory group, it's to advise the board on the LCAP, and, and what, you know, as representatives of the parent community, they think of the LCAP and what should be in there, and if they, there are things in there they don't like, then the superintendent has to respond in writing, et cetera, so.
So, again, it goes back to, I think, we know the what, but what we're, what we have to actually align is the how. So, we have differences.
You were going to. So, yeah, in terms of the how, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, is, is, you know, this is our last, in November, we have one more in December, how can we, when should we, well, I guess, A, do we want, in fact, the board to be formally, you know, accepting staff recommendations and appointing people, and then, and B, you know, how do we, all of us go out and, and, you know, recruit people and have those phone calls, and, and C, do we have a number in mind of how big we want this committee to be, or we just want to see what, when we come back, and how valid?
Is there a percentage that's in the statute at all?
No, no, completely up to us.
I mean, I guess my, I guess my question would be, I think, you know, this is the first year, so I'm more inclined to at least, at least go with the, go the route, or maybe offer the both, you know, both, that it's a, you know, it's a call, any parents interested kind of, you know, statement from the board. But I think it is, that it holds high value to have, you know, staff know of parents who would be interested to participate, to, you know, also do it. who would be interested to participate, to, you know, also do it. I mean, I think we have to do both and, and then both, yeah, anyway.
Both and.
And I think that's an approach I would like to see, because I think, you know, we do ourselves a disservice if we only just, you know, kind of just raise it, the board, you know, like a parcel tax or a CLC. I think it's hard to do that. And at the end of the day, teachers are working more closely with parents than any of us sitting here on this diet, even as a parent or as an auntie or a next-door neighbor or whatever. I think you have to do both, I think, I think is right. But in terms of the number, I don't think, I mean, I'd rather see us get flooded with 25 people. I mean, and, you know, if that's going to happen, I mean, I don't, I don't know what our experience has been. Well, I do know what our experience has been. So, I mean, with that...
You don't want to stress staff out with an unwieldy...
I don't, I don't. But I think, too, we have those other, we have the ELAC, ELAC, PTO, we have all these other groups. If there's some way also to use them, would be highly valuable. We know whether or not, from a call to, you know, call to the author, if you will, you know, through those nominations from teachers, or just making that call, then that's our Plan B. You know what I mean? I just think there's ways that we can address it, if it's kind of open.
Yeah, I think the goal, the goal is to, is to have stakeholder involvement, and the goal is to ensure that there's, I mean, here in some level of board endorsement of this process. And also, in addition to that, it's to be not just efficient with the process, but also effective with our process and the way that we follow the, in following the state, the state guidelines, as relates to that, those that exist in that regard. So, and we have a, this was presented to you as a draft for the purposes of having this discussion today, and we'll take all your feedback back. There's been several great comments that you've shared with us tonight, and we'll make sure that we incorporate, you know, the common themes into the process and the process that we have moving forward with the, getting the EL cap plan produced and the budget produced. So we'll bring that, and we'll bring that back.
I have two more great comments. One, as far as a number is concerned, I don't think we should stick ourselves to a number of people, that is our goal, but more so having each group represented, I think, should be our goal. Each group that we think is going to be, that needs to be represented in this conversation should be our goal, as far as, if that's 10 groups, and their goal is 10 people or what have you. As far as, like, a board endorsement, what have you, I don't feel that it's that important, and I think time is really an issue. And that if we have a very limited number of meetings left, and we want to get this off the ground as soon as possible, then I'm okay with trusting the staff to make those decisions.
I think it's our intent to come back to the board at every board meeting, give an update with regard to EL cap, similar to the ECCL updates that the board receives, so that you're well informed of where we're at in this process. I think history has shown that parent participation has been lacking in some areas, and we need to beat the bushes to get as many staff as we can. I've had very large BAC groups, up to 25, 30 people around large tables. And it's much easier, I think, with large groups, because everybody's informed, and you don't have people coming out of the woodwork as much when you have a larger, more informed That's just been my experience. And I would like to have as large a group as possible and sustain that, you know, for as long as we can, so we have as many of our community members informed about the process as we go through this for the first time.
That makes sense. Quick, just one quick question. How robust is our school site, school site council in both, at both sites? So we got to work on that?
We have to work on that. So again, we want to provide every opportunity that we can address parents. For me, if I have a group of 30, that is, that's actually wonderful. So currently, at the PTO last night, there may have been, what, 10 parents, maybe? And then at the, at every secondary, there's usually the consistent seven that show up. School site councils, you may have two or three. And what happens is that if you have, just what Mark was stating, is that you have more people informed, you actually, the more people you have, you can afford for three or four to fall off, but then you have a critical mass. So our goal is to actually gain a critical mass of parents who can hold the work versus depending on the same five, six, or seven, and you burn them out over the year.
So what I'm hearing, you say that we need to fulfill all our positions on the school site councils as well, while going through this process of recruitment or engagement?
Yes, so basically, with a school site council, you just have to make a, you have to have a composition, a composition requirement. So you could have a school site council that has 20 people on it, or have five, as long as you have the right composition. And because we know that our groups are small, we want to be able to access as many parents as possible to participate in a variety of ways. And not the same ones.
So on the school site council, the first scheduled meeting last month, I was the only person who showed up. Ms. Lathan has redoubled her efforts in recruiting some of the parents who were on last year to show up, and I saw her nail a commitment from a parent last night to come to the November 19th meeting. So hopefully, there's movement in that front. I want to, I do want to see on this parent advisory panel that we do, as soon as we can, broad public notice at both school sites, posted on the front door and in the packets and in school loop and any other of the five ways we have on our website, for communicating to our parents that there's a new opportunity to participate in, on the district's parent advisory panel for advising, you know, and then as non-jargony ways we can describe it, a new, you know, prioritizing process for our education and how we spend our money here. And it's a new law, and there's a new requirement to have a parent, and if you're interested, you know, here's the form you fill out and explain, you know, in a sentence why you want to do that. And translate it.
And I think that, and I think definitely we'll do that. Again, our goal is, when you have a form that students let, guess who the students bring? They bring their parents. When you have teachers who nominate, they not only own the work, they make sure that their parents will get there. So this is a strategy to have everybody own the work. So while we will have, of course, the ones who read their information, they'll be the same parents who always read it. The ones who don't, they never do. So it doesn't matter if it comes on bright pink, bright yellow, polka dot paper, they either are going to read it, or they won't. Twitter people love to tweet, and they'll be on Twitter. Email people are email people. So we will get the information out, but I do know, our goal is not only to have stakeholders, but also to have people own the work. So it doesn't feel like I'm doing this because someone asked me to, but I really want to be engaged. And my child feels that it's important, so they've actually brought me to a community meeting to, so I can give voice. And that has worked as well.
I just ask you to keep us updated on every board meeting.
So I think your idea of having the teachers identify, you know, good prospects is excellent, and the following up, and I've already had some of those conversations with parents at NEH, so I've got some names for you, folks who said they are interested in participating in this process.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this particular item? All right, all right. We'll now move on to item H.7, EdSpecs for ECCL, second reading.
Yes, so the purpose of this item is for the board to do two things. One, to consider approval of the EdSpecs ECCL document, and then direct staff to submit the EdSpecs to CDE for their review and approval. This is a terrific document and an opportunity for us to actually close this final, this piece out related to EdSpecs. Program Director Ed Miller, excuse me, Ed Miller, Roy Miller, I guess I need some more water, is here tonight to answer questions about, there's three attachments that are in the packet that you might want to draw your attention to. The first was the document incorporating the board's first reading review discussion, and that's the big, thick packet. And then there was a list of the revisions that you have before you, and then the specific EdSpec revision pages that have been modified. So, Mr. Miller, you want to go ahead and, if the board has any questions about any of those, before we call for the question?
Yes, that's perfect. I don't really have an additional presentation, so if you have questions, I'd be glad to take those. Or, as Dr. Linda said, we're hoping that you'll consider approval tonight, so that we can forward this on as part of a big submittal to CDE.
Any questions, board members?
This is really minor, but on the, on the program usage charts, where we, you know, have certain areas available to third parties, I assume that those are also available to either someone in the school or in the community to use that time, if they come up with a new idea, not, you know, on an ongoing basis, but any kind of hodgepodge, school dance, or, I don't know.
Sure, sure. I mean, the district, the district and the city both have facility use processes and...
Right, exactly. That's what I said, we could just say, available.
Yeah.
Right.
Fine, I can do that. That's easy.
That's a good, that's a good catch. Only third parties can have that space, okay. Any other points, points of clarification or amendments or comments from board members? Have any on the EdSpec? Any public comments on this particular item, item, set of item documents? So we come back to the board, are we ready to approve? And can I get a motion?
Yeah, with my amendment, as just discussed, I move we adopt the EdSpecs.
And with that, any objections to that? I have none. Moving forward, the EdSpec has been adopted as amended.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, milestone.
Thank you. And just because it's after 10, I'm just trying to move us through here. We have three more items. Enrollment report?
Yes, so this is our first enrollment report that we're providing the board regarding our, the number of students that we have in the school district. And we have our Mark Bonet here to discuss that. If you recall, we provided our C beds information in October, that was submitted. And this is to give a comparison of that. Or we can discuss that as a comparison as well. Mr. Bonet?
I'm going to need just the...
Tech time?
Tech time.
Tech time.
Superintendent Linda, while he's in tech time, how close is the current enrollment to what we've budgeted?
Oh, we're, we're very close to what we budgeted. I think we're off by two, Mr. Bonet? Is that, by two students? Is that...
All right. That's my only question.
I think, I think...
Well, the question really is with regard to our ADA.
And our P2 ADA won't come in until April 15th.
But our enrollment is down from last year. And now that I have it up on my screen here, but...
Yeah, it's going to depend on the grade level, because we're actually, it'd be about
That's right.
We have to, just to get back to your point, Trustee Simon, we have to, we have to budget on some level programmatically. We do budget based on enrollment and ADA, obviously, but we also have to take into consideration our program. And oftentimes, if, for example, when you look at the report, you see a certain grade level doesn't have cohort of 60 in it, we would still, we would not, we would still have to offer that class, like grade three, grade two at 20 to 1, kindergarten at 20 to 1. We wouldn't, we wouldn't change that if the number was, number was down. So we would still have to budget for that, is my point.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think that the point I'm getting to is that we have dropped the last few years. And I think the drop, and it's gone up and down a little, but, but we're not at the, sort of, particularly at the elementary school, we had a pretty steady 540 students for a number of years, and we're not maintaining that. My concern is that it seems to me that when we cut, when we cut the programs that are seen as not core academic, like music, like...
Clear correlations, yeah.
After-school, like sports, whenever we've cut those for budgetary reasons, the result has been, we lose ADA and we lose the money anyway. So I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned, particularly without the test score.
Right.
You know, the last, the year before, we had a bump up in test scores, we had increased ADA, people, I think the bottom line is, we're in competition with other charter schools.
That's real.
And the other charter schools are not saying, we have ADA, they're saying, we have programs. And we have parents, like the one who came tonight, who said, you know, I came for the music program, where's the music? Well, you know, she's just as likely to hear from the other surrounding charters around us who have music, who have the programs, and ADA will go down some more. So I'm just concerned that if it's at all possible, if we can add some of the program that parents look to, parents like John and myself, when we make our school decisions, and, you know, nieces and nephews, like, like Melody, you know, we're all, and five years from now, Joy.
I got cousins in the district.
All right.
So, so let me just, let me just make one comment about, I get your point, you know, about the need to have, you know, a quality exceptional school and programs in it each and every day, for consistency, for cohort consistency. There is, there is one point that you made that I do want to just do a little bit of clarification around. This is our second year of being a K8, and so this will be the, this will be a really great comparison year for us. I do think that you're right, that growth has, we fluctuate from year to year, and we can see, you know, we can see trends, but I don't know if we have a K8 trend yet. So I don't know where the, where the five, where the five over 500 has been consistent in a K6.
The chart, the chart that we're about to see makes it very clear.
So, well, in that regard, I get, I get, I get your point. I'm just, my only point is, we're now, we're now at a K8 and a 912.
So I don't think that's really relevant, quite frankly. I think that the fact is, we've had K12 arts, science for many years. And what we marketed to the community, and what we're marketing to ECCL, is that we work with the whole child, K12, and we had consistent programming, K12. And so when we take away a piece of that, then it does begin to differentiate them. And I think, and it's a concern of mine.
And I, and I agree. And I think that art and music are really important. I just think that the, there's, there's other variables that make this shift different in terms of our enrollment. When you go from a 712 high school versus a K6 or K5 elementary school, and then you loop, I mean, you add one grade from year to year, and now we're consistent with a lower elementary and upper elementary, which is actually our second year of a K8 school. elementary and upper elementary, which is actually our second year of a K8 school, we might expect some regression. And we talked about this a couple of years ago in terms of our enrollment. We knew that this sort of transition, not to mention the fact that we're at a temporary high school facility, program is absolutely important. The arts program, the music program, they need to continue to grow, and we need to continue to grow them K-12. But when we look at this report, we have to look at it within the context of multiple variables that are, that are happening right now, sort of simultaneously, that are impacting these numbers. That's my only point.
So I'm just looking at the K8 school, which last year lost 23 students between last year and this year. So we didn't change that K, it was K8 last year, it's K8 this year, and we had what I view as a big drop. So I'm just concerned that we look at that critically, and I'm concerned that we look at, is there anything we need to do in the last three months of this year to get, so that next year we're moving back towards enrollment of 750? Because ultimately, I think, program equals students, and if we don't have the enrollment, we go into the death spiral of always having fewer and fewer students each year.
That'll be a great.
Because we're cutting program.
That'll be a great conversation for our recruitment presentation that we give in January, and to talk about, talk about how we're going to, how our programs are going to be strengthened.
Please, Mr. Bonet?
Okay. Mr. Bonet?
Excuse me. You had a district enrollment report that shows the inter-district transfers by grade level. So in the K8 area, we had 219 inter-district transfers that came in, which represented 43% of our K8 enrollment for this year. The high school level, we had 144 kids on inter-district transfer, which represented 67%. Overall, our enrollment did go down from last year to this year by 32, 32 students. But as you look at this chart, with the fluctuations that we've had going back to 2008, '09, in '09, we lost 32 students. In, in '11, '12, we lost 58 students. And I think we had some of those programs in place that you were speaking of, Mr. Simon. It's a matter of the economy and the way.
Multiple variables.
I'm sorry, what?
Did I just say there's multiple variables?
Yeah, there's a multitude of, of things that change enrollment in small urban districts. So, and we went, we went up 38 students from '11, '12 to '12, '13, but it is concerning that we lost 32 students.
Absolutely.
Going into this year. Because we had projected, I want to say last year, that we would be at 775, somewhere around that area, that we were going to grow. And next year, we're projecting we're going to grow also, but it's, but it's minimal. I don't think we'll see growth until our new school is built, and you build it and they will come. That's my personal feeling. Anyway.
Well, we've got.
The chart shows we lost 32 students. Currently, we have 723 students enrolled, 508 at the elementary site, 215 at the high school site. Our class size average is just below 18 or just above 17 students per FTE.
Okay.
And you can see back in 2007, '08 through about '10, '11, our class size average per FTE was down in the 14 students per FTE, which truly is unsustainable for a district to have a class size that low. Then over the last 10 years, we had a 8% decline in students, and over the 10 year, last 10 years, we had about an 18% decline in our FTEs. And again, that goes back to the sustainability of having low, really low class sizes. That's the enrollment report. If there are any questions, I.
Questions, sure.
Try to, try to answer them.
Do you know the actual retention rate? So say, I know we're down 32 kids, but we could have lost 40 families and gained eight. I'm just wondering if we know how many, how many families left the district versus how many started with the district this year to the retention rate?
I don't have that information. We, we can pull it, and we can pull it by individual student because of the student identification numbers. So we could match them up, last year's numbers with this year's numbers, to see who stayed and who's gone by grade level.
Does anyone in the district reach out to families who have left to ask why they didn't return?
I'm not aware of that fact, no.
And without a district enrollment director, does the staff have the capacity to do that work? Just as a personal note, this is what I do at the gym. I am the enrollment director, so I'm studying these kind of things all the time. So I'm just, these are things that I do, so I'm just curious if it's being done, but it is not a small piece of work, so.
No, we're not. It's, it's not a small piece of work, and I, we do have, when students exit from the school, we can, we can pull that, as Mr. Bonet said, because we have, we know exactly why students leave, whether they leave because of parents' work, moving out of the area, or different reasons like that. Program satisfaction, and that's done as part of the exiting process. Ms. Allen, you want to?
I think so. There are two questions you kind of raised, and so what you can do is we can pull what you call a gain and loss report. So a gain and loss report states within that year, how many students have we gained and how many students have we lost? So while, like, for example, at the high school, we may have gained, we may have lost four students, but we'll gain three within that same time period. So we can do that. The reasons why usually the parents should on the withdrawal form, they should state why their children are leaving. At the high school in particular, there have been, in the past few months, one, two, three, there have been about four of them who have left because they moved. So we have one that's in San Leandro, two that went to Antioch. I mean, it's just, and it's too far, and some of them try, we tried to think of ways of having them still commute, but it was just too much for them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that issue is kind of out of our control. I mean, if families decide to move, they decide to move. There's nothing we can really do about it, but the other ones that are leaving for program issues.
What's in our control?
A bullying issue, or they weren't, they weren't, they didn't feel that they were heard by their teacher with concerns that they've had. Those are all within our control to help alleviate and, and help gain the trust back from those families and keep them in the district.
Yeah, so I think, I think another question that you asked was how do, in terms of families that we retain or students that we, that we retain. And yes, I think we need to do a study on that. And also, even when we look at program, we need to see, can we match it? So we have actually several students who attend Oakland Tech. That's their home school, so they live in Oakland, they don't live in Emeryville, and it's a big difference going to an Oakland Tech versus Emery Secondary.
Oh, yes.
So, and, and so, yes, program is one, but the social life is different. We have one who commuted for a while, and so he, it's funny because he still attends our games, I just saw him Saturday. He attends our homecoming dances, et cetera, but he moved, he lived in Hayward, and for a while, he did commute, but he decided he wanted to, the large high school experience. So it's very different, that's something that we can't offer here. Another example, students that we lose, that I would say students who attend, in terms of charter schools, one is Oakland Military School. Without me even asking, I already know why they attend Oakland Military School. It's the structure. And for the most part, either the child has identified that they need a rigid structure, or the parent has identified that.
The parent, yeah.
And so, which is very different in terms of what we want to or can offer. So I think there's, there's, while we do study the, the concerns about why students leave, we identify the ones that we can control reasonably. So there's a big difference in trying to convince, and we do, we talk about the small schools, we talk about how they get individualized attention, and sometimes the children come back. They do. But, but, but it's very hard when a child, their parent has experienced a large school, social high school life, and their parents talk about their glory days and what they've done, and we are trying to compete with that, so.
I just, I guess where I'm coming from is that if, if those kind of study, studies are done over, you know, a couple of years, you'll start to see a pattern, and you'll be able to step in before they decide to leave, rather than trying to get them to come back, because that's harder. They've already decided to leave and go somewhere else, they've made that decision, and having them change their minds is going to be really difficult. But if we can find a pattern.
That's great.
And, and try to intervene sooner, I think that that, that's what's going to be best for, not only for those individual kids, but us as a district. It's also going to strengthen what we're offering and how we're offering. So I, I am very cognizant of the capacity issue in this district, and would volunteer to help with those studies if they wanted to happen.
Great.
Like I said, I do it all day, every day. So would be more than happy to come in and help out with that if it happens. But like I said, I understand the capacity issue here.
Yeah, so two, two other areas that you addressed. The secretaries call every year to identify if children are coming back. At the high school, the kids will actually tell you, so you do have time to intervene. And sometimes, once they've made up their mind, they've made up their mind, but I will state, Mr. Shaveran, Mr. Patterson, I've done it, there's several of us on, several people at the high school level that will try to intervene and ask a lot, a lot of questions of the child to identify the real reason they're leaving and see if, what can we do to help support you at the school? So that, that definitely happens, and it happens all the time, and the secretaries they do call.
That's great.
Well, I would, based on what you just said, my suggestion to staff is when you come with the enrollment updates and you have this big of a drop, come with some type of reasoning why we have a drop. You know, based on these examples that you just gave to us, because apparently, I don't know if that's this year, those examples were in previous years, but for me, it would be good for me to know this year why we have a 32 student decline, you know, and those reasons why. So now, if it was a small, you know, drop, 10 students, I probably wouldn't even ask. But with 32, there should be an explanation of why we have, well, yeah, why, why we have this decline.
Yeah, I mean, with 30, with, actually, with those few students, it is, and that's something we can elicit your help with, is just, it comes through the withdrawal forms, and many, many times, we know exactly why. I'm not going to look at a name and tell you why, it's just a matter of how can we put it on, place it on paper, so it's something that you all can read easily.
Because, I mean, and Ms. Anna Krieger, I'm going to put you out there. I mean, you've, you, you know, we've been through these enrollments enough times to know that when the board sees a drop like this, you know, we're going to have, there's going to be some concerns. So knowing us, as you do, you know, especially me, I'm going to ask why. So when staff comes with this large decline, it should be on your mind, when I give this report, I'm going to have to give a reason why. Okay?
Yeah, and I think you're, I think this report will really be helpful in taking a look at that if we go from year to year.
But the numbers don't tell me why.
But, no, they don't, they don't tell you why, but it will help us to, to pinpoint, like, grade specifics, for example, from the fourth to fifth grade, you know, if we lose eight students, what happened there with those eight students? And so we go back, we do that forensics and look at why.
I mean, as far as that chart is concerned, it just tells you how, what the difference is year to year, but it doesn't tell you if, okay, there's a difference of four kids, whether you gained eight and you lost 12, or, you know, like, that's the information that's really important to look at. Because if, if we're gaining, you know, 20 kids every year, but we're losing 40, that's something that, you know, like, why are those 40 leaving versus, hey, we're gaining 20? That means we have the potential for some real growth here, but I think that's the numbers, at least for me, that I don't have a clear understanding of. And like I said, I'd be more than happy to come in personally and do a deeper study. I don't know if this is the right setting, but that information, at least for me.
We have that information in areas, and we can certainly, we do need to do something like that.
So do you have that now, that you can go through the 32, or, you know, or even last year's, whatever change that was, and you know, based on what we have, either in a computer somewhere or in your head, because you know the families? Can we, can we, can you come back at the next board meeting and tell us, here's?
Here are the reasons why, yes. I mean, you can do a tally, these are the reasons. A number of students left because they moved out the area, a number of students went to their home district, a number of students was because of programming. So it can be, it's based on, we can.
Yeah, so that would, I, yeah, I'm repeating my, I agree, if we can get that.
Anna Krieger, is that documented somewhere other than that steel trap of yours?
The withdrawal forms. So, so if you came in to help us, then what we can do is, we can give you like the withdrawal forms, and you can read the reasons why.
Yeah.
And a lot of the parents will place that on there.
We can talk offline, good.
Well, you know, one other point that I think needs to be highlighted, which is no doubt news or anything, but 50% of our.
IDTs.
All inter-district transfers.
They're saving us.
So, and they really, literally.
I know, they have been.
Literally, continue to. So I think, you know, that's, that's important information. This report is very useful in terms of highlighting that, that ratio.
Yeah, last year, it was, I think it was just a little less than 50%, like 49 or 48%.
And, you know, I'll say this, you know, to piggyback on Member Simon, and I can understand his concerns. I mean, with the elementary, especially with the elementary, I mean, we just had this large dip in '11, '12, and then we came up, then we had a large dip in '13, '14, but from actually '06 all the way up to '10, '11, I mean, we were steady. Now, the high school has kind of always been a little issue, but from the elementary standpoint, we've always been strong, you know, with those numbers. And, you know, and he's right, the concern, if we keep dropping in ADA, then that's going to decrease our funding. I mean, if it wasn't for the IDTs, and if it wasn't for our business community, we wouldn't be sitting here at this table right now. Bottom line. So we have to pay strong attention to attendance. I mean.
You, you wouldn't have been sitting here 10 years ago, so.
It don't make it, I'm talking about today.
Yeah, so, so, but what you, but what you have to understand, though, is that when you have that dependency, then it does indicate or dictate in terms of how you recruit or what your marketing plan is.
Right.
So, so, because one of the, when I first started at Antioch, I disenrolled the whole school, because everyone was using, they were, I found cleaner addresses.
Yeah.
There were a lot of caregiver affidavits when they weren't. So I think what we need to do is, once you have a study, and once you understand why, then you're able to actually make informed decisions. So it's not a blanket statement on what we think.
Right.
But we know, we have the percentages.
But I think, hold on, just a minute, Ms. Kent, I'm sorry. But, and I understand that history.
Ash.
Ash, I'm sorry. I understand that history, but we've come so far in, in, over the years, and we have hammered this topic, you know, for years to try to solidify and keep it sustainable. And this year, a 57 student drop, you know, that's a lot, you know, based on all the work we put in over the years. And I'll tell you why. And that's all I'm saying.
And just, again, to, to kind of cheerlead what I was saying as far as a study is concerned, you might, you might run, you might do a study, you might do a study and find out that 90% of the people who leave, leave because they move out of the area.
Okay.
Right now, we don't know that. So if we, but if we do a study and we say, okay, look, every year, we lose 75% of kids, or the 75% of the kids that we lose move out of the area, then now, now we know every year, we have to plan on that.
Right.
And every year, we need to be reaching out to fill that 75%.
Or, as Member Simon says, we need to make a more, better affordable housing in our, in our city.
No, that I agree with.
Yeah.
That is your, I agree with that one.
Ms. Ash, I'm sorry. That's why, that's why we need this kind of information. That's why it's so.
Yeah, I also, and also just to be mindful, Member Dwayne, is you, another reason why we aren't necessarily the sustainable, housing is one. necessarily the sustainable, housing is one, but when you're, and the housing is, so you're dependent on interdistrict transfers. That is, you're right. So therefore, but your strategy has to be different. So a lot of times, what we've been able to do is, we've been able to hold on to those families and they'll, and they're loyal. I mean, we've had students who will commute from far and beyond to be at our schools, but at a certain point, we know that 10 of them can leave at any moment because the commute is just too much for them. So I think it is, I think it's, it is imperative that we look at the information, analyze the information, and then anticipate, our plan has to also include, you know, families that are within our area or their parents live in the area, and then always have a plan to, to continue to, to recruit.
Yeah, I mean, because this is how we went bankrupt the first year, the first time.
The other, the other thing that Ms. Ash might want to look at when she's doing the study is what percentage of those who are leaving are Emeryville residents and what percentage of the interdistrict transfers are actually residents who've just moved across the street? Because part of it is rents in Emeryville are skyrocketing and to the degree that, you know, parents that who are Emeryville residents have just moved across the street, it would be good to know. Because I think the IDT percentage is a bit misleading. Because when we've analyzed it in the past, something like 80 to 90% of our kids.
Across the street.
Are either across the street or they're, the kids of Emeryville, people who work in Emeryville. Their district transfers because, you know, Emeryville has more people working here than downtown Oakland. So I think, I think, I think in the past, we, we've had the capacity to do a much more robust analysis and, which is not that, I mean, we've cut administrative staff, so I don't know that we have the staff. So I deeply appreciate your expertise, Member Ash, and your willingness to, to really help dive in. And I'd suggest we could pull out some of the past analysis that's been done so you can just see some of the things that have been, see, see some of the ways that, that we looked at it back when we had more administrative staff. So, but, but I do think this, it is not a small thing and it is important to look carefully and to specifically, and I'll say it again, I think if there are things that we need to implement before the end of the school year so that the parents who are here now see more things happening and it's not just a guessing game as to what's going to happen next year.
Sure. Absolutely.
And I don't know from an HR standpoint, if there's ways that we can be able to announce, you know, who, who teachers are going to be the following year. I mean, I think it's just a matter of figuring out what we can do and what we can't do to try and capture them back. I apologize, one, for speaking at such length, and two, because I have to leave, I regret, I have the plane to catch in the morning and I still have to pack. So I regret I missed the rest of the meeting, but I really appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Any other comments related to the enrollment report? Anything else? Any public comments? All right. So it appears that we have some additional things coming in the pipeline. Thank you, Mr. Bonet, for bringing this report to the board. We're going to now move on to item H9, financial status report.
Yeah, Mr. Bonet is grabbing his report and this is just the normal monthly update and financial status on the Emery USD budget.
In light of the hour, and, and you will be getting a very thorough report as of the October 31st numbers at the first interim. I would be happy to answer any questions and to answer some of the board's questions from earlier in the meeting. The, the district has received $75,100 in common core funding and we're currently budgeting $150,923.
So we've received half of our.
We have received half and according to information, the governor just released the second half. So that will be coming at the end of this, by the end of this month. To answer the board with regard to PCMG Inc., that, those were license agreements for Office Pro Plus, WinPro. They were software packages that we loaded on the laptops that we received.
What's the 4U315 out here?
That is supplies. So some of that was supplies. There was a 5800 on that PCM and that was a perpetual license with a maintenance agreement attached to it. So that's why it was charged to the 5800. And then there was laptop locks that were attached to the laptops and Ryan charged those as part of the, part of the laptop and the 4400 account.
I just come to question that 4350 at $27,000 for licensing and using and labeling it as a supply. I mean, it's internal, but that's just my, you know, that's just me.
But the, each, each one was $51 apiece.
Okay, all right.
And we bought 200 licenses with.
I saw what you guys said.
Now, the model price, some of that was the covers, but there was also HDMI cables, Cat 6 cables, some wireless routers and some, I'm not quite sure what this is, Thunderbolt to VGA adapter.
Very accurate.
And some of those should probably have been charged to the 4300 account, Mr. Dwin, as opposed to the 4400 account.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonet.
The other thing I would like to mention to the board, and I give you these updates that I get from the State Controller's Office, revenues are up again in the month of October by 10%. It's another sign that the economy is coming back. The state budget is about $600 million over projections at this point in time. So if there are any questions on the fiscal report that you have, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But again, I'll be going over this more thoroughly in the first interim report with the board.
Just a question, you guys will be having a finance committee meeting soon.
What is it, when is the 20?
Finance committee meeting on.
What date?
November 20th.
Okay.
Okay. And when will your agenda go out? Because I'm curious about a couple of items.
I'll try to get that out Monday.
Okay. Okay. Any question?
Would you like to see something on the agenda for that meeting?
Yeah, I do.
What would you like?
I'll contact you.
Okay.
Look, Ms., look, Ms., Dr. Lindo, I'm going to get this right. Mrs. Ash, Dr. Lindo, you guys will know what I want on there. But I'll let you guys know before I leave tonight, if I don't forget. Thank you, Mr. Bonet. Any public comment on this particular item?
Just one question.
Oh, please. See, you know, hey, I thought I came up here, I see.
Just, are we, are we on track? Anything to be concerned about? Took a look at the receipts from state revenues. They're almost non-existent at this point. Little concerned about that. I know the state is still deferring payments, but they're not making those regular apportements with the new LCFF. So I need to research when we're going to start getting consistent dollars from the state.
That's a cash flow issue.
That's a cash flow issue.
But in terms.
But we're in a good position with regard to cash flow because of our large reserves.
Right. But in terms of projected expenditures and projected revenues and how the year is progressing or are we.
I think we're online with, with, with those, yes.
Based on that, the only question I have is that, I've been getting, and maybe this is different because it's a different part of money, but I have been getting paid for child development for 13-14. I've been getting checks from the state. Now, I'm not K-12, so I don't, I don't know what's been coming in on that side, but I at least know from my standpoint, I've been getting in checks.
We've been, we've received, I think, only two payments and both of them have been pretty low. One was, I believe, $7,000. I think recently, another was about $8,000, which.
No, no, something going on. Something going on.
And I don't know if it's the reporting that, that the why is putting in with regard to the number of students that we have? Because generally, that's a monthly report that, or quarterly report that we submit to the state.
Right.
With the number of child development students that we have.
No, no, okay. So let me, I wasn't talking about the district EUSD receiving the money for child development because I am, but I'm talking about just in general, when you said that there's a cash flow issue and the district had not received any, any cash for 13-14.
The district has received some cash.
Right.
But it's awfully.
Is this low?
It's awfully low.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's good enough.
Okay. Any public comments on this? Yes, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bonet, and appreciate bringing forward those comments from the previous item as well. We'll now move on to ECCL update, item 10 under H, report to the board on various project activities.
Yes, so I'm going to actually take this one for Roy because what I wanted to do is just take a moment to have a conversation related to the plans and the transition that we have with Roy. I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to react and ask questions, obviously, about, about this transition. You know, it's likely, it's going to be very, very difficult to find someone of Roy's talent and capacity and ability to do the job that he has done. So what we've been looking at and having a conversation about is actually bifurcating his job into two roles. Roy has worn the hat of the full-service community schools coordinator, director. He's been driving a lot of the ECCL work on the vision side, but in addition to that, he has worked with the architects and our contractors and all of the subs around the work that we're doing to actually get the facility built. And so, so with, with that in mind, if we, if we think about the job, essentially, it has kind of three categories of work attached to it. The facilities development, physical plant, the relationship development with the city and other third-party, third-party partners, and then the project supports. We're really looking at a job for two people. So what I am proposing that we do is hire an interim construction project manager and for, just to work with, just to work with getting the building built and just to work with the, with the subs in that regard. And then that person would actually work and be coordinated and overseen by our CBO on the operations side because Mr. Bonet, if you recall, one of the reasons why we hired him had to do with his experience with getting all of the new facilities built in Pittsburgh. And so Pittsburgh Unified School District. So I think that this will be the perfect opportunity for the interim ECCL project construction manager to work with him in that job. And so, and Roy and I and Mr. Bonet, over the next, over the next couple of weeks, would be working to develop the precise scope of work that this interim person would do. One of the pieces to that, to that job, the appointment of an interim project manager would be actually having that person to develop and prepare and facilitate an RFP process for a full-blown construction management manager or management company for the duration of the project. And so, you know, part of the question to you tonight might be, would you want to have a interim, would you want to have a project manager replace or would you like us to go out for an RFP to have a construction management firm to actually manage this process? And so, so, and we've, we've talked a little bit about this at the facilities committee meeting and Trustee Dwin can, you know, certainly weigh in on that, on that conversation. The other piece, so that's one part of the job. The other part of the, of Roy's job has been the, and you heard from, those of you that were at the city schools committee meeting the other night, you heard about the, from the Children's Aid Society about the need to have a, an ECCL full-service community schools coordinator or director. And this person would be the liaison or intersection point between the school district, our third-party partners and our joint occupancy partner, the school, the, the city of Emeryville, and help us to essentially coordinate all the scopes of work that are, that are attached to that. And I wanted to just have this initial conversation with you to reassure you that, one, we're, we're thinking very deeply about this and will be bringing back to you on the 20th, which is our special board meeting, a recommendation about, about how we're to, how we're to proceed. But I wanted to hear from you tonight, the full board, about your, your deeper thoughts on, on this transition. So we believe we have everything, everything, everything under control, but in knowing what the, what the precise scopes of work are, but just the, your thoughts on the position itself and separating this work out at this point, how you feel about that is something we need to know. So.
I would just speak on the facilities piece regarding the replacement of Mr. Miller and, you know, that individual, you know, it's kind of already known, I think, who Superintendent kind of wants to bring in, but I think we do need to let the board know that the person that may come in is a retired, a retired facilities person as well. So they can only work, what, 960 hours in a year? So that would either be full-time for a half a year or part-time for a full year. And, you know, each year, they can re-up that 960 hours. So that's the first, you know, that's the first thing regarding the initial replacement for Mr. Miller. And then, as Superintendent said, having that individual come in, come on and transition with Mr. Miller, there will be a need to have either a construction management firm or a particular individual to come in and continue or to help manage the process. So I definitely want to put that out there to the board regarding this individual being retired. But I think after this individual comes on, there is a need to hire, you know, most likely a construction management firm. I wouldn't be as comfortable as with an individual unless they just had an enormous amount of experience and could exemplify that, you know, they could do the job alone by themselves. I think this is a big project and, I mean, as Superintendent said, Mr. Miller has wore about five or six hats. So doing, doing this work, even outside of the coordinator spot, is still a lot of work to be done. And there, you know, this person that will be coming on to assist or make the transition with Mr. Miller would still need some help. So that's kind of, I think, if you want to say my, you know, recommendation or based on the facilities committee discussion on this, is that, you know, and I can support it, bringing it, bringing on someone with the transition and then setting up an RFP for a, a construction management firm to come in and finish off the project. So if there's questions after that. the project. So if there's questions after that.
My first vote is to clone Roy. So Mark, if you could look in the budget, see if we have room to just clone him real quick. That'd be great.
There you go.
I think that an interim is needed. I like the RFP idea to make sure that we get, you know, the best of the best. My only question would be, if the interim does a transition time with Roy, does the interim then do another transition time with the group that we bring in after the interim?
Right. I think more what I would see as far as that transition, it's either one of two things. It could be yes, or it could be that the construction management firm would actually assist this person in some of the work, or that person would start, you know, some of the work regarding looking at permits, working with DSA, working with DTSC, you know, working with those regulators to get things started, and then maybe this construction firm coming in and finishing up, you know, the things that he started and/or working along with him as things progress with the permit process and the approval processes from the different agencies that we have to go through. That's me.
So I can, absolutely, just to echo that, but the short answer would be, yes, we would, I'll be bringing forward, assuming this is the direction that you are supporting, bringing forward on November 20th, the hire of an interim project manager. And that person would work concurrently with Roy and parallel with Roy as part of the transition. And then, as they get on board and move the work for us, particularly with the RFP process and the selection of the CM firm, we would then have a similar transition with that person and that work.
Yeah, my biggest concern is that the many, many details that have been planned over the last 10 years get lost. So that would be my only concern, like my biggest concern, not my only concern, but my biggest concern is that the work that Roy holds then gets transferred to this new person, and then it continues to get transferred, and that nothing gets lost.
And I think, you know, from my perspective, I think that's why it's so important to move quickly in terms of getting someone in here, you know, identifying that person and, you know, making sure we execute it timely so that we can have them in here as soon as possible to create as much opportunity for that collaboration that would be required. In terms of a construction management company, I'm just curious if the thought is also that we get more, more of a, well, I won't say it that way, but with that direction, would we get more resources, I guess, outside of the district, I guess, right, to execute some of these things, or more capacity, that's the word I want to use, because I know that is always a concern, but I think with the hire of a construction management team, or however that works, we get actually more bandwidth to execute things, or is it still tied to the contract that we ultimately...
Yeah. So I'm actually going to defer to two experts on construction management that we have here in the room, Roy and Mark, if you will, if you want to weigh in on this. We do have access to that, but we, it's big picture, but we also have key point people that are working specifically on our project, who would essentially own our project for us, like we have right now with MK, excuse me, MAC5, excuse me, MAC5.
We could get as large a team as we can afford.
Right.
Because the firms will bring in, in a project this size, probably one person, and maybe additional oversight behind that, maybe a higher-level person, and, but if we need more, we can get more resources depending on the workload.
Okay. And, you know, my other question is in terms of, I think I recall Roy saying that he was, I don't think he wanted to stay here for the next 50 years, first of all. I don't think that was the goal. I think he wanted to see the project through its ultimate, you know, completion and that part of the work be concluded or evolve into the next step. So I'm just curious in terms of, from the district's perspective, the fact that we're moving toward the completion of this project and would co-locate, because Roy has absolutely done more than just this project. What are those elements that at some point we won't need, you know what I mean, that are going to be concluded once the project is done? Because he's also sought, he's overseen the, I can't even get the word out, Annie Yates renovation, I'll use that word. But, I mean, there's certain larger capital projects or, I don't know, just capital projects, but, well, large pieces of things that needed to be done as district architect. So are those things that we're going to have to replace at a certain point in time? I mean, that's kind of the question I was curious about as we move into another, as we move into the larger facility, will that role be necessary, or is it going to change significantly?
So after the ECCL facility is built, there will be a transition period with the CM firm as far as a closing out, closing out and everything. Roy's position actually was a temporary position when it was put in place, so we would have to have that conversation about what it would mean. That work would be subsumed in terms of span of control under the CBO and our facilities, our facilities manager, our maintenance and operations guy, but it could be, it's possible that there could be another, a need for a permanent person after we use a CM firm. But that's something to determine, I think, probably at a later time.
I'm just curious as to what Roy thinks we should do. What would Roy do? I'm going to have bracelets made.
That's funny, what would Roy do?
What would Roy do? What, do you think, what, I mean, what's your advice as far as our course of action?
Relative to what Dr. Lindo and Mark were just recommending?
Yes.
I think that's the right course of action.
An interim and then an RFP?
Yeah. Well, so, so the part that I'm totally convinced on is dividing the job description into a couple of different roles, because I don't know whether the district will continue to need CM-type or even architectural-type services in the future. I'm quite certain that both the district and the city will need a community schools director. And how that position evolves and what it becomes, I think, remains to be seen, but I believe that Children's Aid Society knows what they're talking about, and that's certainly what they're recommending strongly, and I agree with that. So in terms of, I think the only debate that I have, and this is really, Mark and Dr. Lindo and I, we've all talked about this, but whether you hire an outside consulting firm, a CM firm, or whether you try to have that as part of your temporary in-house staff, I think that's the debate. And there are pros and cons to both approaches, and I think that's something that you and the superintendent and the CBO should make a decision about. I can see it happening either way.
I have another question. Would this CM firm, if that's the route that we choose, would they take us through the completion of Phase 2?
Well, so the timing of Phase 2, I mean, again, I think that's a future, a future decision. The timing of Phase 2 is still somewhat unknown, and I think you should just hold off on that and wait till it's needed.
Now, what I will say, based on what Mr. Miller just said, my, if there is a concern for me is dollars. And if we bring in an individual to come in first with the transition and then hire a CM later on, that's going to cost us extra money versus hiring just a CM firm right off the bat.
Well, the CM, so a CM is going to cost you more than, I mean, the reason that you brought me in-house in the first place years ago was exactly, well, one of the reasons was certainly that issue of how to provide these kinds of services for the most efficient use of the bond dollars. I mean, that was behind this idea in the first place. And you can certainly spend less money hiring the capacity in-house, because you're paying an outside firm, any consulting firm, you're paying for their overhead and profit and all those sorts of things. And so the only question is, can you get the right person? You know, having a person on staff, exactly who they are and how they fit with your organization and all the rest, is much trickier than hiring a consulting company.
Okay, so you feel that an individual would be a little bit cheaper than a firm?
It certainly would be less expensive, but you have to find, you have to find the right person.
Got to have the right marriage.
I'm with you there, okay.
No, I think that's helpful. I mean, I do see the, I see the strategy, I see the capacity issue or bandwidth or both words, and I think, you know, at this point in time, the district needs to ensure that we are maintaining, you know, the fluidity in which we need things to go. So, I mean, I see that Plan A right now makes a whole bunch of sense. And who knows, maybe at the, you know, maybe at some point it's determined that that's the best course to go and not go with the construction management team. But I think, you know, we have to move along with the interim, because we need to make sure we get as much overlap as possible.
Question with that. So we bring in an interim, and then what's the, what would the timeline be to put out an RFP for a CM firm if that's what we decide to do?
Oh, I think right away.
So that's the first question, and I ask that because what if we bring in an interim and we think that that person can do everything, and then we can decide at that point whether or not we feel that we need to reach out to a CM firm?
Well, the one thing that I can tell you for sure is that you will need full-time, the facilities portion of the job is a full-time role. And the, one of the disadvantages, there are many advantages to the individual that Mr. Bonet was referring to. I've met him. I think he would be terrific to help with this transition. He's just not available full-time. I mean, he legally can't be available full-time for the rest of the duration of the project.
Well, that's helpful. So, and when would that, when would we, let's do an RFP process? What did you say? Like, within the next two months, we'll have something posted? I mean, would that be the intent?
As soon as we possibly can. We've asked counsel for RFP form, so we can go through that and then get it on the street as soon as possible.
And the piece that I would recommend there, and I haven't had a chance to mention this to Mark yet, but, you know, the ECCL project has a lot of contracts that are either in place or so far along in terms of being billed, that this is a great opportunity to match the scope of work of a CM contract, a proposed CM contract, to all of the pieces of the puzzle that are already there. We have a great, my opinion, our counsel has helped us craft a terrific set of agreements with the architectural team, a terrific agreement in draft that we've implemented an early piece of for the lease-leaseback builder. And we've just recently finished writing, I think, a very thorough contract for an inspector of record, also another key role. So the last piece would be matching a CM contract to those other major contracts that the district's holding. It's a perfect time to do that.
Sorry, I have another question. So if we brought in the interim and then we decided that, well, no, I guess we've already decided that the interim wouldn't be able to continue, could we then, in parallel, look for a CM firm and maybe an individual, and then we see which one we like better? Can you search for both?
That wouldn't be our recommendation. It would be to have the interim come in for a short period of time until we had the RFP process in place and we hired a CM firm, and then a short transition after that with a CM firm. So I know we just accepted your retirement, Mr. Miller, but are we going to be able to have any access to your knowledge and services on any kind of consulting basis? And, you know, I don't know if you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but there's so much institutional history and knowledge there that...
So we'll be working with Roy through the duration of his time here, and then after that, there is, there are PERS limitations that we have discovered that will make it, that would make it challenging for him to stay beyond that. So I do believe that Roy has shared with me that he would be available for a phone call or a question, but this is a retirement, and we're going to be working very, very hard, you know, over the next month or so, to make sure that, you know, when January 10th rolls along, that we've gleaned as much information from Mr. Miller as we possibly can to make this transition as smooth as possible.
I just needed to move to Emeryville.
So, and I can share with you on a personnel side, you know, offline, what the issues are associated with that.
Great. Appreciate that. The other piece that is hanging out there that is somewhat emblematic of the multiple roles that Roy's held is the master plan task force and sort of planning for what we're going to do with Annie Yates and how we're going to build that into the full-service community school model strategy. How are we covering that?
Yeah, absolutely. And so part of that conversation, you know, we've put that work on hold until January, February, so we've already established that with the city schools committee. That being said, that gives us a little bit of time to think about how we're going to address that. And that's probably a bigger conversation with the city schools committee, along with the conversation associated with the second part of Roy's job, which is the full-service community schools director position, which is a conversation that I'd like to move to January. It isn't that we're not thinking about that. We heard pretty loud and clear that we wanted this building to, we wanted the building to get torn down for the abatement and demolition. We wanted to take care of all of the environmental issues and get the contract with Turner signed and move that work along. And right now, that's our biggest priority with Roy. Not to the exclusion of the programmatic development work or the work of the task force in making those decisions, but this is like the most critical piece of work right now. But it is on the list, it is on the list, to finish out the task force work this spring.
Well, and there's, you know, just, as George Bush the first would say, the vision thing.
There you go.
Being a Republican over here, the community schools vision thing, we need, we need that maintained as part of the conversation, how we're thinking about work.
And to quote the second George Bush, we're trying to use a little bit of strategery here, right?
It's terrible. Y'all need to stop.
The hour is late.
It's late, so we're getting a little boogie, but yes.
So when you say move that to January, you mean move the conversations of trying to find that person until January?
Oh, no, 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 no. The full-service community schools coordinator?
Yes.
Yes. So we still have to have another couple of conversations with the city schools committee, and we need to finalize a job description for that person.
I hear that.
Yeah. Yeah.
However, if you start the search process in January, that means there's going to be at least two months where we have a hole, and that is concerning to me.
Okay.
Because we've talked about how we need to start this work now, not when the building is built, and to take a two-month break, I think, would be detrimental to the momentum that we as a district have already started.
And I totally agree with you, and there are pieces of that that I'll be holding myself, related to the relationship with the city, related to the joint occupancy agreement, and related to some of these other pieces of work, but this is also, to your earlier point about bandwidth and capacity, this, getting this, the construction project going and that work is really key to this, and it isn't off the radar. It absolutely isn't, and we know that the timeline for both is important, but there are pieces associated with the full-service community schools coordinator, and some decision coordination and some conversations that need to happen with both the school board and the City Schools Committee, which was evidenced in the last, this past, the last meeting, that I think need to happen in order for us to really go forward with having a full-service community schools coordinator in a position that, one, we either own ourselves, and we own it for the next 18 months, but it's also a position that is embraced by the city in terms of, you know, in terms of the recommendation that we would be moving forward with input from them. I mean, this is where we're making the shift, and we're making the shift to a partnership, and this position is going to be critical to the long-term sustainability in terms of the org structure. And if this is a moment where we can actually bring them in, perhaps to share the position in terms of budget, or share their thinking about how this position needs to be thought about, we need to take time and give ourselves permission and time to do that thoughtfully. And I don't think there will be any loss in that in terms of time, because those conversations will be ongoing, you'll be involved in them, and then when we do post for the position, we'll have the right position, the right job description, and we'll move that work along.
I agree with all of your points, and this will be the last point that I make, just to play devil's advocate, we constantly talk about bandwidth and capacity here, and in order to take that two-month, three-month, whatever break it is, it means that work is then piled on existing staff, and that is concerning.
I agree.
So, that's just my...
Duly noted, yes.
In listening to the presentation from the Children's Aid Society and their recommendation that, to be honest, I support, I think we need an individual to kind of link all the nexuses. But I think at this point in time, the major concern is getting the building down and start erecting up the new building, and so with me just saying that, just kind of cut to the chase, is that I think we really need to look at how this position is going to be funded. It should not come out of Measure J, I'll just make that plain now, and...
Which position are you speaking of?
The coordinator.
Oh, okay.
The coordinator. So, yeah, again, I support it, but, you know, I think we need to find how we will fund it, and again, Measure J funds is not it, and if we're going to do, pay for this out of the district's general fund, then we really need to take a close look at, before we budget this position, where we stand with everything else, and then look at how we budget for this position. Because one thing that I'm kind of cognizant of now is that when we went to the school service workshop, and they were talking about LCCF, and they showed the five school districts that went under state receivership, which this district was one of them, the explanation or, you know, well, one of the explanations that they gave for why those school districts went into receivership is that they went into receivership the year after a large flux in revenue. So apparently, the year before going under receivership with these districts, they had a large pot of funding, and because they had that in their fund balance, they spent money, you know, maybe a little bit, you know, foolishly. So I don't want us to get into that same situation, even though I highly think that we need a coordinator. I just need for us to look at where these dollars are coming from and the timing of when we hire this person. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think one of the points that was made in that school service workshop was that some of those were ongoing, and if we were to think about this position and we thought about it as one time, you know, we would definitely make sure that we could afford it, I think, is that your point?
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's just it.
Any other comments from board members? I think, I mean, I don't think we got any different than what was recommended. I think that was the tone, the agreement on that, that it looks like we were in line with what the proposal is, so we'll just look forward to the meeting on next Wednesday night.
Yes.
I'm confused by now, but thank you very much. We'll now move to board reports and announcements.
Thank you.
I'm going to do a really quick job of reporting to the board regarding the Communications Committee this evening. Previous, prior to the meeting, we briefly discussed the five ways of communication, and there would be additional comments. We were, and I don't want to, I don't think it needs, requires to go really lengthy, but our next meeting will further the discussion regarding the five ways of communication, district-wide communication, that was initially brought forward in the board retreat in August. And one other point was that, that came up this evening, and Dr. Lindo mentioned the fact that the benchmarks for the dashboard of indicators, there were some, well, we were to discuss K8 indicators, so that conversation is still happening, and it looks like we'll be talking about more, or different, different obvious areas that don't necessarily encompass state testing that looks like won't be happening next year. In addition to that, we briefly discussed some of the communication that will be happening as it relates to ECCL, and probably will start tomorrow, actually, as a result of this evening's personnel action. So that's just a really brief comment related to board reports and announcements. Are there any other board reports and announcements at this time? Calendar review, Jay?
Yes, so let's see, so November 13th, we, well, today, we had our Communications Committee meeting and that you just reported on. November 20th, we have a Finance Committee meeting, and November 20th, we have a Special Board meeting. December 4th, we have a Facilities Committee meeting. December 5th, there's a City Schools meeting, and then December 11th, there's a board meeting.
I won't be at the December 5th City Schools meeting.
Yeah, I'm traveling south. Traveling south.
I won't be there either, yeah.
I'm jealous. Okay, so we'll now actually convene our closed session and adjourn out of open session and convene our closed session.
11:31.
Something like that. I'm bad.